Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall.[272.82][272.82][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[272.91][272.91][S01. Good morning, everybody.[273.00][273.00][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[273.08][273.08][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[273.16][273.16][S01. Good morning, everybody.[273.24][273.24][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[273.32][273.32][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[273.41][273.41][S01. Good morning, everybody.[273.49][273.49][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[273.57][273.57][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[273.65][273.65][S01. Good morning, everybody.[273.73][273.73][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[273.81][273.81][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[273.89][273.89][S01. Good morning, everybody.[273.97][273.97][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[274.05][274.05][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[274.13][274.13][S01. Good morning, everybody.[274.21][274.21][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[274.29][274.29][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[274.37][274.37][S01. Good morning, everybody.[274.45][274.45][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[274.53][274.53][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[274.61][274.61][S01. Good morning, everybody.[274.69][274.69][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[274.77][274.77][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[274.85][274.85][S01. Good morning, everybody.[274.93][274.93][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[275.01][275.01][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[275.09][275.09][S01. Good morning, everybody.[275.17][275.17][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[275.25][275.25][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[275.33][275.33][S01. Good morning, everybody.[275.41][275.41][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[275.49][275.49][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[275.57][275.57][S01. Good morning, everybody.[275.65][275.65][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[275.73][275.73][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[275.81][275.81][S01. Good morning, everybody.[275.89][275.89][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[275.97][275.97][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[276.05][276.05][S01. Good morning, everybody.[276.13][276.13][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[276.21][276.21][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[276.29][276.29][S01. Good morning, everybody.[276.37][276.37][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[276.45][276.45][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[276.53][276.53][S01. Good morning, everybody.[276.61][276.61][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[276.69][276.69][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[276.77][276.77][S01. Good morning, everybody.[276.85][276.85][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[276.93][276.93][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[277.01][277.01][S01. Good morning, everybody.[277.09][277.09][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[277.17][277.17][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[277.25][277.25][S01. Good morning, everybody.[277.33][277.33][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[277.41][277.41][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[277.49][277.49][S01. Good morning, everybody.[277.57][277.57][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[277.65][277.65][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[277.73][277.73][S01. Good morning, everybody.[277.81][277.81][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[277.89][277.89][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[277.97][277.97][S01. Good morning, everybody.[278.05][278.05][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[278.13][278.13][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[278.21][278.21][S01. Good morning, everybody.[278.29][278.29][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[278.37][278.37][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[278.45][278.45][S01. Good morning, everybody.[278.53][278.53][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[278.61][278.61][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[278.69][278.69][S01. Good morning, everybody.[278.77][278.77][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[278.85][278.85][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[278.93][278.93][S01. Good morning, everybody.[279.01][279.01][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[279.09][279.09][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[279.17][279.17][S01. Good morning, everybody.[279.25][279.25][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[279.33][279.33][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[279.41][279.41][S01. Good morning, everybody.[279.49][279.49][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[279.57][279.57][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[279.65][279.65][S01. Good morning, everybody.[279.73][279.73][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[279.81][279.81][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[279.89][279.89][S01. Good morning, everybody.[279.97][279.97][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[280.05][280.05][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[280.13][280.13][S01. Good morning, everybody.[280.21][280.21][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[280.29][280.29][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[280.37][280.37][S01. Good morning, everybody.[280.45][280.45][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[280.53][280.53][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[280.61][280.61][S01. Good morning, everybody.[280.69][280.69][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[280.77][280.77][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[280.85][280.85][S01. Good morning, everybody.[280.93][280.93][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[281.01][281.01][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[281.09][281.09][S01. Good morning, everybody.[281.17][281.17][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[281.25][281.25][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[281.33][281.33][S01. Good morning, everybody.[281.41][281.41][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[281.49][281.49][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[281.57][281.57][S01. Good morning, everybody.[281.65][281.65][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[281.73][281.73][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[281.81][281.81][S01. Good morning, everybody.[281.89][281.89][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[281.97][281.97][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[282.05][282.05][S01. Good morning, everybody.[282.13][282.13][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[282.21][282.21][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[282.29][282.29][S01. Good morning, everybody.[282.37][282.37][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[282.45][282.45][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[282.53][282.53][S01. Good morning, everybody.[282.61][282.61][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[282.69][282.69][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[282.77][282.77][S01. Good morning, everybody.[282.85][282.85][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[282.93][282.93][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[283.01][283.01][S01. Good morning, everybody.[283.09][283.09][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[283.17][283.17][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[283.25][283.25][S01. Good morning, everybody.[283.33][283.33][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[283.41][283.41][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[283.49][283.49][S01. Good morning, everybody.[283.57][283.57][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[283.65][283.65][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[283.73][283.73][S01. Good morning, everybody.[283.81][283.81][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[283.89][283.89][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[283.97][283.97][S01. Good morning, everybody.[284.05][284.05][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[284.13][284.13][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[284.21][284.21][S01. Good morning, everybody.[284.29][284.29][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[284.37][284.37][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[284.45][284.45][S01. Good morning, everybody.[284.53][284.53][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[284.61][284.61][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[284.69][284.69][S01. Good morning, everybody.[284.77][284.77][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[284.85][284.85][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[284.93][284.93][S01. Good morning, everybody.[285.01][285.01][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[285.09][285.09][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[285.17][285.17][S01. Good morning, everybody.[285.25][285.25][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[285.33][285.33][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[285.41][285.41][S01. Good morning, everybody.[285.49][285.49][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[285.57][285.57][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[285.65][285.65][S01. Good morning, everybody.[285.73][285.73][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[285.81][285.81][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[285.89][285.89][S01. Good morning, everybody.[285.97][285.97][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[286.05][286.05][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[286.13][286.13][S01. Good morning, everybody.[286.21][286.21][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[286.29][286.29][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[286.37][286.37][S01. Good morning, everybody.[286.45][286.45][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[286.53][286.53][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[286.61][286.61][S01. Good morning, everybody.[286.69][286.69][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[286.77][286.77][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[286.85][286.85][S01. Good morning, everybody.[286.93][286.93][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[287.01][287.01][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[287.09][287.09][S01. Good morning, everybody.[287.17][287.17][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[287.25][287.25][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[287.33][287.33][S01. Good morning, everybody.[287.41][287.41][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[287.49][287.49][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[287.57][287.57][S01. Good morning, everybody.[287.65][287.65][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[287.73][287.73][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[287.81][287.81][S01. Good morning, everybody.[287.89][287.89][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[287.97][287.97][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[288.05][288.05][S01. Good morning, everybody.[288.13][288.13][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[288.21][288.21][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[288.29][288.29][S01. Good morning, everybody.[288.37][288.37][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[288.45][288.45][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[288.53][288.53][S01. Good morning, everybody.[288.61][288.61][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[288.69][288.69][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[288.77][288.77][S01. Good morning, everybody.[288.85][288.85][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[288.93][288.93][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[289.01][289.01][S01. Good morning, everybody.[289.09][289.09][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[289.17][289.17][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[289.25][289.25][S01. Good morning, everybody.[289.33][289.33][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[289.41][289.41][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[289.49][289.49][S01. Good morning, everybody.[289.57][289.57][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[289.65][289.65][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[289.73][289.73][S01. Good morning, everybody.[289.81][289.81][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[289.89][289.89][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[289.97][289.97][S01. Good morning, everybody.[290.05][290.05][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[290.13][290.13][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[290.21][290.21][S01. Good morning, everybody.[290.29][290.29][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[290.37][290.37][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[290.45][290.45][S01. Good morning, everybody.[290.53][290.53][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[290.61][290.61][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[290.69][290.69][S01. Good morning, everybody.[290.77][290.77][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[290.85][290.85][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[290.93][290.93][S01. Good morning, everybody.[291.01][291.01][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[291.09][291.09][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[291.17][291.17][S01. Good morning, everybody.[291.25][291.25][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[291.33][291.33][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[291.41][291.41][S01. Good morning, everybody.[291.49][291.49][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[291.57][291.57][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[291.65][291.65][S01. Good morning, everybody.[291.73][291.73][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[291.81][291.81][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[291.89][291.89][S01. Good morning, everybody.[291.97][291.97][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[292.05][292.05][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[292.13][292.13][S01. Good morning, everybody.[292.21][292.21][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[292.29][292.29][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[292.37][292.37][S01. Good morning, everybody.[292.45][292.45][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[292.53][292.53][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[292.61][292.61][S01. Good morning, everybody.[292.69][292.69][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[292.77][292.77][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[292.85][292.85][S01. Good morning, everybody.[292.93][292.93][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[293.01][293.01][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[293.09][293.09][S01. Good morning, everybody.[293.17][293.17][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[293.25][293.25][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[293.33][293.33][S01. Good morning, everybody.[293.41][293.41][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[293.49][293.49][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[293.57][293.57][S01. Good morning, everybody.[293.65][293.65][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[293.73][293.73][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[293.81][293.81][S01. Good morning, everybody.[293.89][293.89][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[293.97][293.97][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[294.05][294.05][S01. Good morning, everybody.[294.13][294.13][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[294.21][294.21][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[294.29][294.29][S01. Good morning, everybody.[294.37][294.37][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[294.45][294.45][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[294.53][294.53][S01. Good morning, everybody.[294.61][294.61][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[294.69][294.69][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[294.77][294.77][S01. Good morning, everybody.[294.85][294.85][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[294.93][294.93][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[295.01][295.01][S01. Good morning, everybody.[295.09][295.09][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[295.17][295.17][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[295.25][295.25][S01. Good morning, everybody.[295.33][295.33][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[295.41][295.41][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[295.49][295.49][S01. Good morning, everybody.[295.57][295.57][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[295.65][295.65][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[295.73][295.73][S01. Good morning, everybody.[295.81][295.81][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[295.89][295.89][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[295.97][295.97][S01. Good morning, everybody.[296.05][296.05][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[296.13][296.13][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[296.21][296.21][S01. Good morning, everybody.[296.29][296.29][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[296.37][296.37][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[296.45][296.45][S01. Good morning, everybody.[296.53][296.53][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[296.61][296.61][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[296.69][296.69][S01. Good morning, everybody.[296.77][296.77][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[296.85][296.85][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[296.93][296.93][S01. Good morning, everybody.[297.01][297.01][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[297.09][297.09][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[297.17][297.17][S01. Good morning, everybody.[297.25][297.25][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[297.33][297.33][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[297.41][297.41][S01. Good morning, everybody.[297.49][297.49][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[297.57][297.57][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[297.65][297.65][S01. Good morning, everybody.[297.73][297.73][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[297.81][297.81][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[297.89][297.89][S01. Good morning, everybody.[297.97][297.97][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[298.05][298.05][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[298.13][298.13][S01. Good morning, everybody.[298.21][298.21][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[298.29][298.29][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[298.37][298.37][S01. Good morning, everybody.[298.45][298.45][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[298.53][298.53][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[298.61][298.61][S01. Good morning, everybody.[298.69][298.69][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[298.77][298.77][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[298.85][298.85][S01. Good morning, everybody.[298.93][298.93][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[299.01][299.01][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[299.09][299.09][S01. Good morning, everybody.[299.17][299.17][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[299.25][299.25][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[299.33][299.33][S01. Good morning, everybody.[299.41][299.41][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[299.49][299.49][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[299.57][299.57][S01. Good morning, everybody.[299.65][299.65][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[299.73][299.73][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[299.81][299.81][S01. Good morning, everybody.[299.89][299.89][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[299.97][299.97][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[299.99][299.99][S01. Good morning, everybody.[300.07][300.07][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[300.15][300.15][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[300.23][300.23][S01. Good morning, everybody.[300.31][300.31][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[300.39][300.39][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[300.47][300.47][S01. Good morning, everybody.[300.55][300.55][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[300.63][300.63][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[300.71][300.71][S01. Good morning, everybody.[300.79][300.79][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[300.87][300.87][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[300.95][300.95][S01. Good morning, everybody.[301.03][301.03][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[301.11][301.11][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[301.19][301.19][S01. Good morning, everybody.[301.27][301.27][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[301.35][301.35][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[301.43][301.43][S01. Good morning, everybody.[301.51][301.51][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[301.59][301.59][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[301.67][301.67][S01. Good morning, everybody.[301.75][301.75][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[301.83][301.83][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[301.91][301.91][S01. Good morning, everybody.[302.00][302.00][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[302.08][302.08][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[302.16][302.16][S01. Good morning, everybody.[302.24][302.24][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[302.32][302.32][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[302.40][302.40][S01. Good morning, everybody.[302.48][302.48][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[302.56][302.56][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[302.64][302.64][S01. Good morning, everybody.[302.72][302.72][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[302.80][302.80][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[302.88][302.88][S01. Good morning, everybody.[302.96][302.96][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[303.04][303.04][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[303.12][303.12][S01. Good morning, everybody.[303.20][303.20][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[303.28][303.28][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[303.36][303.36][S01. Good morning, everybody.[303.44][303.44][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[303.52][303.52][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[303.60][303.60][S01. Good morning, everybody.[303.68][303.68][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[303.76][303.76][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[303.84][303.84][S01. Good morning, everybody.[303.92][303.92][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[304.00][304.00][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[304.08][304.08][S01. Good morning, everybody.[304.16][304.16][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[304.24][304.24][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[304.32][304.32][S01. Good morning, everybody.[304.40][304.40][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[304.48][304.48][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[304.56][304.56][S01. Good morning, everybody.[304.64][304.64][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[304.72][304.72][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[304.80][304.80][S01. Good morning, everybody.[304.88][304.88][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[304.96][304.96][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[305.04][305.04][S01. Good morning, everybody.[305.12][305.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[305.20][305.20][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[305.28][305.28][S01. Good morning, everybody.[305.36][305.36][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[305.44][305.44][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[305.52][305.52][S01. Good morning, everybody.[305.60][305.60][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[305.68][305.68][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[305.76][305.76][S01. Good morning, everybody.[305.84][305.84][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[305.92][305.92][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[306.00][306.00][S01. Good morning, everybody.[306.08][306.08][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[306.16][306.16][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[306.24][306.24][S01. Good morning, everybody.[306.32][306.32][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[306.40][306.40][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[306.48][306.48][S01. Good morning, everybody.[306.56][306.56][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[306.64][306.64][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[306.72][306.72][S01. Good morning, everybody.[306.80][306.80][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[306.88][306.88][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[306.96][306.96][S01. Good morning, everybody.[307.04][307.04][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[307.12][307.12][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[307.20][307.20][S01. Good morning, everybody.[307.28][307.28][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[307.36][307.36][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[307.44][307.44][S01. Good morning, everybody.[307.52][307.52][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[307.60][307.60][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[307.68][307.68][S01. Good morning, everybody.[307.76][307.76][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[307.84][307.84][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[307.92][307.92][S01. Good morning, everybody.[308.00][308.00][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[308.08][308.08][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[308.16][308.16][S01. Good morning, everybody.[308.24][308.24][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[308.32][308.32][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[308.40][308.40][S01. Good morning, everybody.[308.48][308.48][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[308.56][308.56][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[308.64][308.64][S01. Good morning, everybody.[308.72][308.72][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[308.80][308.80][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[308.88][308.88][S01. Good morning, everybody.[308.96][308.96][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[309.04][309.04][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[309.12][309.12][S01. Good morning, everybody.[309.20][309.20][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[309.28][309.28][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[309.36][309.36][S01. Good morning, everybody.[309.44][309.44][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[309.52][309.52][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[309.60][309.60][S01. Good morning, everybody.[309.68][309.68][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[309.76][309.76][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[309.84][309.84][S01. Good morning, everybody.[309.92][309.92][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[310.00][310.00][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[310.08][310.08][S01. Good morning, everybody.[310.16][310.16][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[310.24][310.24][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[310.32][310.32][S01. Good morning, everybody.[310.40][310.40][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[310.48][310.48][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[310.56][310.56][S01. Good morning, everybody.[310.64][310.64][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[310.72][310.72][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[310.80][310.80][S01. Good morning, everybody.[310.88][310.88][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[310.96][310.96][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[311.04][311.04][S01. Good morning, everybody.[311.12][311.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[311.20][311.20][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[311.28][311.28][S01. Good morning, everybody.[311.36][311.36][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[311.44][311.44][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[311.52][311.52][S01. Good morning, everybody.[311.60][311.60][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[311.68][311.68][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[311.76][311.76][S01. Good morning, everybody.[311.84][311.84][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[311.92][311.92][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[312.00][312.00][S01. Good morning, everybody.[312.08][312.08][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[312.16][312.16][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[312.24][312.24][S01. Good morning, everybody.[312.32][312.32][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[312.40][312.40][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[312.48][312.48][S01. Good morning, everybody.[312.56][312.56][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[312.64][312.64][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[312.72][312.72][S01. Good morning, everybody.[312.80][312.80][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[312.88][312.88][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[312.96][312.96][S01. Good morning, everybody.[313.04][313.04][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[313.12][313.12][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[313.20][313.20][S01. Good morning, everybody.[313.28][313.28][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[313.36][313.36][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[313.44][313.44][S01. Good morning, everybody.[313.52][313.52][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[313.60][313.60][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[313.68][313.68][S01. Good morning, everybody.[313.76][313.76][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[313.84][313.84][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[313.92][313.92][S01. Good morning, everybody.[314.00][314.00][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[314.08][314.08][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[314.16][314.16][S01. Good morning, everybody.[314.24][314.24][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[314.32][314.32][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[314.40][314.40][S01. Good morning, everybody.[314.48][314.48][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[314.56][314.56][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[314.64][314.64][S01. Good morning, everybody.[314.72][314.72][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[314.80][314.80][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[314.88][314.88][S01. Good morning, everybody.[314.96][314.96][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[315.04][315.04][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[315.12][315.12][S01. Good morning, everybody.[315.20][315.20][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[315.28][315.28][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[315.36][315.36][S01. Good morning, everybody.[315.44][315.44][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[315.52][315.52][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[315.60][315.60][S01. Good morning, everybody.[315.68][315.68][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[315.76][315.76][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[315.84][315.84][S01. Good morning, everybody.[315.92][315.92][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[316.00][316.00][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[316.08][316.08][S01. Good morning, everybody.[316.16][316.16][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[316.24][316.24][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[316.32][316.32][S01. Good morning, everybody.[316.40][316.40][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[316.48][316.48][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[316.56][316.56][S01. Good morning, everybody.[316.64][316.64][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[316.72][316.72][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[316.80][316.80][S01. Good morning, everybody.[316.88][316.88][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[316.96][316.96][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[317.04][317.04][S01. Good morning, everybody.[317.12][317.12][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[317.20][317.20][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[317.28][317.28][S01. Good morning, everybody.[317.36][317.36][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[317.44][317.44][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[317.52][317.52][S01. Good morning, everybody.[317.60][317.60][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[317.68][317.68][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[317.76][317.76][S01. Good morning, everybody.[317.84][317.84][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[317.92][317.92][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[318.00][318.00][S01. Good morning, everybody.[318.08][318.08][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[318.16][318.16][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[318.24][318.24][S01. Good morning, everybody.[318.32][318.32][S01. Welcome to City Hall.[318.40][318.40][S01. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council.[318.48][318.48][S01. Good morning, everybody.[318.56]
Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Calling the roll, Cardenas, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Labanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
The council is officially in session. Next item?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Garcetti moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds.
Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item none, number one, is a public hearing confirmation of a 1911 Act Improvement Assessment in Council District Seven. If there are no protest, council can approve the assessments.
Members, item number one is now before us, and I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. There's no request to call this item special. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is also a public hearing item, item number two. It's a street vacation in Council District Nine. If there are no protests, council can instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Members, item number two now before us, and again, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on this item. Public hearing is open and closed. Any requests to call item number two special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Items three and four are public hearing items, and on both those items, the applicant consents to a continuance to November first.
Okay, any objection callings to continuing items three and four? Seeing none. Those items are continued. Next item?
Items five through thirty-four are items for which public hearings have been held. On item number twenty, a report has been submitted and distributed to the council members. And also on number eight, there's a request to continue that matter for one week.
Okay, any objection to continuing item number eight? Seeing none. Item eight is continued. Colleagues, five through thirty-four are now before us, and these items have had public hearings. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. Specials, beginning with Mr. Sign.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. Call special by Mr. Sign. Mr. Smith.
As item number six be continued until tomorrow.
Any objection to continuing item six for one day? Seeing none. Item six is continued. Mr. Rosendale. Twenty-one. Call special by Mr. Rosendale. Mr. Labanche.
Refer twenty-five to Public Works Committee for more discussion, please.
Okay.
Can you accept that, Mr. Smith? Thank you.
If there's no objection, item number twenty-five is so referred. Ms. Han.
Thank you. I'd like to continue item twenty-eight for one day.
Any objection, colleagues?
And I'd like to call thirty-four special.
And thirty-four, call special by Ms. Han. Mr. Garcetti.
Not yet, forty-nine.
Okay. Mr. Rosendale. Twenty-four, call special by Mr. Rosendale. Any other specials on items five through thirty-four? Mr. Reyes.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, call special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing none. Then, on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items thirty-five through forty-eight, ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, items thirty-five through forty-eight are to be considered by the City Council today. I do not have speaker cards submitted for items thirty-five through forty-eight. Public hearings are open and closed. Any specials? Mr. Rosendale. Thirty-nine. Call special by Mr. Rosendale. Any other specials, thirty-five through forty-eight? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, on the supplemental agenda, items forty-nine through fifty-five, items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. These items are before the City Council today. Mr. Garcetti wishes to call item forty-nine special on the balance of the items. Including item forty-nine, we do not have speaker cards. Those public hearings are open and closed. Any other specials? Members, fifty through fifty-five? Seeing none. Let's open the roll. Mr. Cardenas.
Fifty and fifty-one special?
Fifty and fifty-one, call special by Mr. Cardenas. Leaving items fifty-two through fifty-five on the desk. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. That dispenses with our consent items. Colleagues, before returning to items called special, let me recognize Mr. Garcetti for a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and my apologies for Tuesday presentation, but the timing is right for this one. The mayor's office has asked for us to present on behalf of Mayor Antonio Villarreal Commemoration Today of the United Nations Day, the sixtieth anniversary of the founding of the United Nations here in California, in San Francisco. It is an incredibly historic day, October 24th, 1945. And we gather here with a group of folks that are familiar, I think, to most of us here around the table. Norma Foster, the president of the United Nations USA Pacific Los Angeles Chapter, and her fellow board members, Ted Litzinger, who's our vice president and with Citizens for Global Solutions, Dr. Geraldine Washington, president of the NWA CP Los Angeles, and an ambassador for peace, Joan Collins-Carry, the director and ambassador for peace as well, and Kimio Anseni, the Women's Federation for World Peace, and also a member of the board. We all know here in these chambers, as well as anywhere, where we were visited by Secretary General Kofi Annan less than two years ago, when we embraced in these chambers the Millennium Goals for Development under Mr. Padilla's leadership, and we had that commemoration that moved forward, but so many other aspects of the United Nations, which we have not only marked here, whether it is the United Nations' move for making sure that we have an international criminal court, which we've embraced. Again, those Millennium Goals, the World Habitat Day, which just a couple months ago, or last month, excuse me, we also had a commemoration of. It has certainly been an extraordinary relationship between this city and embracing the United Nations. So, on behalf of the mayor, I wanted to read the last part of this proclamation. We're speaking for Antonio Villarreal, therefore, I, Antonio R. Villarreal, mayor of the City of Los Angeles, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2005, as United Nations Day in the City of Los Angeles, and also congratulations to you on your sixtieth anniversary. The past UN Day honoree chairpersons and Ralph Bunch Peace Award recipients have included Henry Fonda, Tom Bradley, Johnny Grant, Julie Andrews, Sidney Poitier, Angela Landsberg, Paul Robeson, Oprah Winfrey, the list goes on and on, Chip Murray, Edward James Olmos, Hugh Houser, Angela O., Ed Begley Jr., et cetera. So, we really want to thank the United Nations Association here in Los Angeles. Congratulate the United Nations, and please join me in congratulating Norma Foster and the rest of the board here, and we'll hear a few words from Norma as well. Happy UN Day, everybody.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. President Padilla, Councilmember Eric Garcetti, and council members, the United Nations Association Pacific Los Angeles Chapter and board members are very proud of our thirty-three years of jointly recognizing United Nations Day annually with the City of Los Angeles. Even more so in 2005, the sixtieth anniversary of the founding of the United Nations. The Pacific Los Angeles Chapter is the oldest chapter in the United Nations Association, which is the nation's largest grassroots foreign policy organization and the leading center of global policy of the United Nations and global issues. We are proud that in 1972, the council of the City of Los Angeles acknowledged its status as a UN world city by recognizing the United Nations Charter. The council also approved the Millennium Development Goals as signed onto by all 191 member states at the United Nations to be achieved by the year 2015. The theme this year is child health and survival, the Millennium Development Goals and the Most Vulnerable. We make a commitment, our board, to continue to work with the City of Los Angeles, all the departments and non-governmental organizations, to make the eight Millennium Development Goals a reality in the next two years, ten years, and beyond. We thank you for continuing this tradition with us, the United Nations Association Pacific Los Angeles Chapter. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Returning to the items called special, or actually, that's good to a general public comment at this time, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward Ms. Laura Williams at this time.
My name is Laura Williams. I'm president of Californians for Disability Rights, a statewide advocacy organization in the state of California since 1970. I was here earlier to speak on an issue of providing equal and equivalent facilitation and access at the Griffith Park Observatory, and when that issue comes before you, I would hope that you remember that going in a back door is discrimination, that when we come to a facility, we like to be able to stay with our families, stay with our groups, and we expect to be able to visit the fine structures in the City of Los Angeles as all other members of the public. So, I speak for full inclusion for all members of our society, because when we, our society does not provide full inclusion for all of its members, then we do not really deserve the term "society" because we exclude them and discriminate against them. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you.
Thank you very much for being here. This will conclude general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number twenty-one was called special by Councilmember Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale. And before you begin, Mr. Rosendale, colleagues, if I can have your cooperation, this side of the chamber is getting really crowded and beginning to get loud.
Do you want to keep us down here?
Sergeants.
Well, this is all the notes for, um...
Go ahead, Mr. Rosendale.
Mr. President, we're waiting for the staff to show up, so could we put it on the desk until they show up?
Okay, let's hold this on the desk and proceed to item twenty-four, which is also your item. Mr. Rosendale, are we ready for item twenty-four?
Could the neighborhood council head come up? Greg Smith, Greg Nelson?
Is Mr. Nelson here? Okay, we'll hold this on the desk while we await Mr. Nelson. Next item is item thirty-one. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, I was hoping we'd have DOT staff on this item. I know my staff's been trying to get someone down here to answer some questions. Do we have anyone here from DOT? Come on up, please. Colleagues, if you look at item thirty-one, we talk about a report that speaks to factors that applies to the city's transit services and how we evaluate the transit lines. Am I correct?
Yes.
Now, to me, it's obvious that in the transit-dependent areas in the city, the buses are very full, they're not as timely. We don't give folks the reason to think, maybe I should leave my car at home, maybe I should take the bus, because of the overcrowded conditions, everything else. Now, I know that's not DOT's role, that's MTA operation issue. What I'm trying to put forward to you is that in this assessment, do we have the flexibility to study how we can implement shuttles that connect our rail stations, that connect the major regional transit lines? When you have pockets in the city that are up to 40,000 people per square mile, you know we don't have enough buses, but we could use shuttles to get people from their door, or maybe just walk a block, jump on the shuttle, and get to the bus. We have situations, for example, in my district, where I have three generations living in one household. That means you have five to six, up to eight cars per household, when you only have two-car driveways, there's no more room to park, people are walking a block or two just to park because of the density issue. Now, I'm sharing this with you, I'm putting it on the spot, but the bottom line is, are we thinking about shuttle systems to feed into the major bus lines? Is that a fact and a variable we can study if we're going to be going through these assessments?
The department does do restructuring studies of its entire service about once every three to four years. We're in the process of restarting restructuring studies. The one coming up the soonest is the one in downtown LA. The door-to-door shuttle service, or curb-to-curb shuttle service, we don't have.
Now, why aren't we thinking that way? Why aren't we looking at how we actually penetrate into the neighborhoods so that we can pick up people and get them to the major bus routes and the rail stations? Our riderships are low, our parking ride lots aren't sufficient, we don't have enough parking, we're investing millions and not billions of dollars in this transit system, yet we're not getting to the customer.
We do have curb-to-curb service, but in the city ride, dollar ride program, as it were, for the seniors and disabled. But in the future, when we do the restructuring studies, we can, at that time, ask to look at that aspect also. Usually, demand response trips are pretty cost prohibitive.
Well, colleagues, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we include in this assessment. When we talk about how do you evaluate, is adding a whole other element of service that brings dash systems, electric shuttles into the neighborhoods, so that people can really feel they have an option other than their vehicle, their cars, because we are not serving the communities where we should be.
We can do that, we can add that. Also, just as a small point of history, the department did do the Smart Shuttle Project, which was very similar to what you had identified. It had fixed routes, but it would deviate from it based on demand from the constituency. So, we can look into that when we do our restructuring studies.
Okay, I just think it's important we start getting a little bit more aggressive in how we give people options other than their vehicle, and if we don't penetrate the neighborhoods, we're going to continue with incomplete system. And that would be a friendly amendment, colleagues, that we can add that other level of analysis to talk about where we can build up neighborhood shuttles to connect into the major transit lines and rail stations.
Thank you.
Can I have a second on that motion?
Yes, a second.
Thank you.
And we'll consider the item as amended. Any other speakers? Mr. Sign.
Thank you. I have some questions regarding the Valley Service on the dash. With the Orange Line opening on the 28th and the 29th, the end of this month, there was an issue about expanding that service to a wider radius of the San Fernando Valley, where there is no parking on the West End. They're going to be expanding it within the boundaries of Warner Center for the businesses that currently exist, extending the hours and the routes, but there's a great concern for the public access to get to the Orange Line from areas that are west and north, but in particular, west of the transit center that's been established at Warner Center. And I know that we're running on time since the 28th to 29th this month. It's going to go into full operation. So, if you could look into that, we've discussed this with the transportation folks in the past. We had a committee hearing in transportation regarding it, but I've got a great concern about that Orange Line. It won't be successful if people don't use it, and if people don't have a place to park where they enter that Orange Line in Warner Center, since there's no street parking, there's only parking at the Westfield Shopping Town, which they are not going to permit the transit population to use that lot. We need to come up with some alternative resource, alternative source for transportation to the Orange Line. In addition, the parking that is going to be provided at Warner Center is one year from completion. So, for the next year, we've got a serious problem getting our commuters, our business folks, from their residence to the Orange Line, and hopefully relieve that east-west corridor on the 101 freeway. So, if you can, please do something between now and then. I know MTA is aware of the situation with the Orange Line operation, but there's got to be some link-up with the dash that we have in place, and maybe some coordination, better coordination between MTA and DOT to serve that population. Again, if we don't kick it off correctly when it begins, a year later when the parking lot goes in, it's going to be too late, and people will say it's not worth it, and I don't want to see that fail. We've got a major investment in that transportation quarter.
Per your instructions, Councilman, we have started those discussions with the MTA, but unfortunately, I'm not privy to the details. My bureau chief is working on that issue, and he is to arrive here soon if you wish to ask him further questions, but we will be reporting back to Transportation Committee, as you're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
In Venice, we have a dash bus, and I understand that there's some concerns about the ridership. Can you give me an update on that?
I assume you're referring to the Dash Venice Summer Shuttle?
Yeah.
Again, Councilman, I'm not, I don't know all the details at this point in time. I do know that it was up for cancellation because of the poor performance of the service.
One of the reasons there's poor performance is the marketing of the dash bus. People don't know there's a bus that they can take, and people would prefer to take a bus than gridlock, the continued gridlock. I know some groups that have used the dash bus to the beach, but there's also just the general sensing of the dash bus as an opportunity. In my district, we have an aging community, and we all want to get old, and we're all beginning to worry about how to get around, and the dash bus has been one of the main discussion points that I've heard lately. So, I'd like you to take a look at my district in the context of dash buses, especially for seniors. Up in the Pacific Palisades, we have a commuter express bus called the 430. Are you familiar with the status of that bus, which really takes people from the Palisades downtown? So, once again, we can avoid that gridlock that we have on Sunset. We've tried to expand it to bring in students along the way so it could be more successful. Any sense of the status of the 430?
I believe it's being reviewed currently. Again, it's not one of my projects, so I'm just trying to cover for, but we can contact your office and give you a full update. I'll have the right people contact you right away and give you a full update.
Great, and most importantly, besides the 430 Express and the dash bus in Venice, is an overall plan of marketing the dash bus in my district, so people would know it exists, where they can get on the bus. We can share it with senior citizen centers, we can share it with neighborhood councils, we can share it with community groups, so we can get more people out of the automobile into what I think is really the future, which is a series of dash buses.
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Sign and Mr. Rosendale, were the two that I heard discussing this item. We've obviously had a lot of discussion about the dash buses in the West Side and the entire city of Los Angeles, and I think the most important thing that I've talked about and the committee has talked about has been the importance of a seamless system, and that as we evaluate, we look at whether we're hooking up to the Orange Line, whether we're looking at the end game for, after the Orange Line gets to the metro, to the red line and the different locations, that we have those feeder systems throughout. And I think reviewing this and this motion is something that will move us in that direction, and I believe that the good news is a lot of people are focusing on the dash buses now, and our transit system. The bad news is, a lot of people are focusing on it. So, we're going to be holding accountable and having a lot more discussion, which, again, I think in the end is going to be a better result, where there is support and focus and an understanding of how the dash system operates and what we need to make it operate better. So, just my two cents on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labanche.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This year, the observatory, or next year in 2006, is going to open. What's your plan to bring back service in that area?
Again, Councilman, I'm not privy to the details.
But if you were in charge, what would you do?
I would make sure I do what you asked me to do.
Oh, that's very good. Just connect the subway, as everybody's saying, connect the blue line, the orange line, the gold line, spoken hub. The hub is the transit of the subway system, the gold line, the blue line, the green line, the orange line, and feed it. And I would hope you think, in your staff meetings, and I know I've talked to others at DOT, that there'd be a dash bus from the Sunset and Vermont Subway Station to the Observatory, back down Ferndale to the Sunset Western and loop back. That gives people an opportunity. And also, members, I want you to listen to this, and I don't know if Mr. Rosendale could hear this here, because he may hear this as well. They don't have to be square boxes as buses. I want, in Vancouver, British Columbia, some of their buses are trolleys, open air. And members, I think we should look at that, although it's a little inclement today in its weather. I'd like to see that particular one to the observatory be a trolley, open air on the rear with access, so people can have access if they're in wheelchairs, but at the same time, make it an experience, make it an experience. So, add that to the mix, and thank you for being so bright and smart.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
And as a former deputy, this is what you expected, right?
Yes, sir.
The bottom line for me is, as I look at your evaluation criteria, you have here one, utilization of resources as one indicator, which is passengers per revenue hour. You have cost effectiveness, subsidy per passenger mile. Then you have three fiscal responsibility, operating ration, percentage of operating costs recovered from passenger fares. What's glaring to me is I don't see the performance of a route if you're not going through places that requires transit support. I don't see how these lines are being designated in places that are transit-dependent. How can you evaluate a system if the routes themselves aren't going through dense pockets that are transit-dependent? And I'd like to see a variable of that type, so we know where these systems are going through, if they are not achieving the ridership, maybe it triggers a threshold that allows us to start thinking about neighborhood shuttles, and I'm back to that, and I want to reinforce that concept, but we have another gentleman at the table?
Yes, Jim Lefton, Chief of Transit with the Department of Transportation. I heard the tail end of your comments. Real quickly, the transit performance measures that we've discussed in our report, we've utilized for a number of years now, they help the department determine which routes are performing well based on an agreed set upon set of criteria, and for those routes that aren't performing well, which routes need to be improved or possibly canceled, and then those resources could be used for other routes within the city. In terms of your comment about where the route should operate, transit-dependent areas, the department undertakes studies. We just completed one, as you recall, in June of this year, a transit need assessment study, which did exactly what you were asking us to do, which was to try to determine where in the city is the need greatest for new dash services, and we came up with criteria which included income and availability of an automobile and things like that, factors like that, which helped us to determine where the greatest need is for dash. We came up with a list of the top 22 routes citywide where new dashes should be implemented if we have the resources to do so.
Based on poverty levels?
Yes.
Transit dependency?
Based on, right, based on factors that we've determined through regression analysis that best predict success of our existing services. It includes availability of a car, income, factors that you mentioned.
So, how does that fold into the criteria that you presented in this report?
This report only deals with our existing services and how well they're performing relative to each other. Which routes are doing well, are carrying the most people, are most cost-effective, which routes are not. That helps us determine which routes we should cancel, which routes we need to improve. Where we put new resources is based on what we did part of the restructuring study, the dash need assessment study.
So, given your response, is it appropriate to say that perhaps the transit-dependent communities could possibly be benefiting from a transit shuttle system to feed into the transit lines?
I'm saying that the dash need assessment study did just that, but I think the criteria that we use to evaluate the effectiveness of the services is separate.
Right. What I'm trying to do is connect the academic, analytical, scientific approach that you're describing to actual implementation of services for transit-dependent folks.
Right.
I'm trying to create that link.
I'm saying they're two different things. We did a separate analysis on where...
No, I understand what you did. What I'm trying to tell you is I'm trying to build up a case that gets this department to think about circulators and shuttle systems... up a case that gets this department to think about circulators and shuttle systems as another system to feed into those lines, using that data, using this analysis to promote those concepts and actually implement programs like that. And the reason why I'm being so forceful about this is I can't forget back when I was a deputy, like our colleague next to you, where we were told by DOT that CERN shuttles couldn't happen. And if they did, this is the way it had to go. When in fact, we had to be very aggressive. We pulled the project from the department. We stated the destination points for the department because the deputies and the people in the community let us know where they want to go. We created a line and that line became the Pico Union Echo Park Line, one of the most heavily used that literally compensated and carried the weight of passengers to legitimize other shuttles that did not have ridership. So, to me, that speaks to a disconnect back then. Again, giving you the benefit of the doubt, that was 10 years ago. I'm sure we've come a long way, but now I need to be very aggressive with term limits on the horizon to impose and implement policies that talk about addressing the transit dependent folks. And I'm just seeing in this report a breakdown, or either it's not reported correctly or not clear enough, but the reason why we're having this conversation is to address that point that we need to look at transit dependent pockets, think about circulators, and creating a whole new market to support the buses and our ridership and our rail lines, because they are right now lacking.
We agree 100%. Again, that was our basis for doing that need assessment study throughout the city, meeting with community groups throughout the city, what are their needs, identifying attractors that we want to try to attract, residential areas. So, we agree with what you're saying 100%. We felt that the dash needs study did, in fact, did that.
I would love to see a report. Send to my office, send me another one.
Sure.
And then let's see where we can take this. Get some directives together to actually direct the department to achieve your goals.
Okay.
If we're talking the same language, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Mr. Lefton, you joined us here and you know what I'm going to ask about?
No.
The Observatory. And you're going to be thinking about the Observatory. I just see, because your colleague there, a former council staffer, who answered all the questions completely, promised the service as soon as it's in, but you've got to follow up on it. I know I'm teasing you a little bit. But looking at that connector, and I think what Mr. Reyes talked about, I see there's a dash and there's also the 603, which is an MTA line, which is a short line, and it's always packed. It's like a little dash bus. It goes through the neighborhoods. It gets to the people. It runs through Pico Union, up through Echo Park, through Silver Lake, out Fletcher to Glendale. And it's a job connector too, for some people. So, just wanted to put a plus in again for the Observatory. As you looked at 2006, you got to have it there, because we can't open without that connection. And also, the open air trolleys for things like the Observatory, and I know I spoke to, or will speak to Mr. Rosendahl and some of those who have attraction areas, that the Venice instead of a square bus should be an open air trolley that connects people and make it more fun as well as efficient. Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. I believe we now have staff here on items 21 and 24. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes. 21, which has to do with the Controller's Audit of Cable Franchise Agreements. Could we have the Controller's Office and the ITA people? We have a whole group coming on up. Come on up, folks. Have a nice seat. Good morning, lady and gentlemen. Introduce yourselves.
Fairytale Controlers Office.
George Skiles, Controller's Office.
I'm sorry, Fairytale Controlers Office.
Bring the mic closer to you. My colleague Janice Hahn, who is Chair of this Oversight Committee, wants to hear you as well as I do.
Sure. George Skiles, Controller's Office.
And Thera Bradshaw, General Manager, Information Technology Agency.
Well, good morning. Could I get a briefing and also, obviously, the cable viewers who are watching this on Channel 35, what this audit was all about and what your findings were?
Sure. We issued a report in May 2005 and general objective was to look at the ITA's contracting practice and monitoring over cable franchise agreements. To doing so, we selected some of the agreements going back three fiscal years, ending in June 30 at 2004. And overall, we noticed some lacks and deficiencies in monitoring. And Mr. Skiles is in charge and would give you some specifics.
Thank you.
Sure. Essentially, to summarize, we had two major findings. The first is the fact that the agreements were 18 years old and had not been renewed. Old provisions, it is believed that the agreements could be updated significantly to better serve the city as well as the city's residents.
On that point, the contract was a 15-year contract, is that right?
It was a 15-year contract.
So, it went three years without a renewal?
Right. They have annual agreements. You'd have to ask the department.
Why did that go year to year, month to month, and not get renewed?
One of the big outreach efforts was underway when I actually came to Los Angeles and I was able to complete that and deliver that to the council December 24, 2003. That was the Needs Assessment Report. The Needs Assessment established a large outreach effort to the community, to various interest groups, to define what the community believed their cable service should be like. It included, it's a very extensive document, which for the public who's watching is available online through lacity.org website and ITA. It's under the reports section. And since that time, the council has given renewals to basically begin negotiations. Negotiations are underway now and the CLA has been leading that effort along with a lead negotiator.
Back to the Controller's Office. That three-year period, which we have just gone through, I know, because I'd been a cable executive, that the cable industry obviously knew that there would be a 15-year contract.
Right.
And they obviously could have provided their leadership for renewals of it. The city could have provided its leadership for renewals. And it could have happened three years ago, correct?
That's right.
And did we lose money in this process? Did we lose a deal? And now, the whole industry is going through another merger and consolidation. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know that the city has lost money. I believe that certainly that this delay has led to a delay in the recovery of money. But again, as far as what the city is owed, we'd have to refer that to ITA.
We are current.
It says, number two, ITA did not assess the accuracy of payments from operators in a timely manner. Is that what you say?
That's right.
Explain that.
Okay. As far as the ITA, we talked about ITA's renewal of the agreements themselves. The second portion, a major point of the audit was monitoring practices. A couple methods that ITA would ensure compliance with the agreements, first in reviewing the payments made to ITA on an ongoing basis, as well as conducting annual audits of the payments to make sure that the city was paid what it was supposed to be paid. At the same time, doing audits of the cable operators, compliance audits, to ensure that the quality of service is what they are supposed to provide, and assessing penalties on an ongoing basis when non-compliance is identified. So, those two key areas of monitoring are necessary on a go-forward basis to ensure that the city receives the services that it's due.
Your third point was, ITA cannot demonstrate that operators fully remit public education and government access payments as required. Explain that one?
During the course of the 15-year agreements, an amount, I believe it was 2.7 million as cited in the report, over that period of time was due for the provision of public access channels, as well as the building of a facility here in the city to provide government access, Channel 35. Money was owed to the city and going back over the payments over those 15 years, we found that not all of that 2.7 million had been accounted for in ITA's, in the accounting of the receipts of that money. So, again, the money wasn't accounted for.
I'm going to ask ITA to respond, but the fourth point that you've made in your audit is, ITA failed to consistently sanction operators for violations of their cable franchise agreements in a timely manner. What do you mean by that?
Basically, ITA identified non-compliance on a continual basis. This is specifically related to public educational government access. There are specific requirements in the agreement, what the cable operator needs to provide. This is so that the public, mainly public access, so the public can go in and provide programming on public access channels. Cable operators are required to provide certain equipment, a certain level of service. And in cases where ITA identified non-compliance with those requirements, penalties, they have been assessed, which were not assessed at that time. I believe ITA is currently trying to seek, assess penalties right now for those, but they did not at that time throughout the 15-year agreement.
And then the last point is back to the original point, which is, ITA allowed a cable franchise to operate since 1987 without an agreement? What's that?
Well, this is a very small cable franchise operating in, what's the community, I'm sorry?
It's Malibu area.
It's a very small, I believe there are, there's less than 100 subscribers, but they've been operating without an agreement for an extended period of time during this renewal process and renegotiating the agreements for all of the operators. It makes sense to renegotiate and get an agreement in place for this operator.
Well, thank you. And if I could ask ITA to respond to, ITA did not assess the accuracy of payments from operators in a timely manner. ITA did not demonstrate that operators fully remit public educational and government access payments. ITA failed to consistently sanction operators for violation of their cable franchise agreement in a timely manner. Could you respond to those?
Let me tell you that we agree with recommendations that were made in the Controller's Report. And when this came out, I was a new GM, so I frankly really welcome this audit to help our department improve and help the city as well as the consumers. I have to say that today, I can't answer for what was before I got here. Since 2002, the Division has meticulously reviewed cable television rate increases and made recommendations to the Commission and to this council that have resulted in $70 million returned to the consumers of the city of Los Angeles. You've made good public policy in regards to that. Additionally, the Division has taken considerable efforts to complete all the franchise fee audits that hadn't been done, frankly, previous to my arrival. Those, we've collected $8 million owed to the city and we are current in all audits today. Additionally, the Division has worked with the Commission, the Board of Information Technology Commission, to institute some of the strictest consumer standards, along with a bill of rights for the customers of the cable service. Those are all very aggressive, very assertive things that we've been able to accomplish since 2002. We have also improved our processes and the city is in negotiations because technology has changed in the world. A cable company is not just a cable company. They're providing internet service, telephony, along with cable television service. And so, these negotiations are very important to consumers. We hear they want reasonable rates and they want quality service. And that's what the negotiations will get us.
Thank you. And I just want my colleagues to know that if this franchises had been renewed three years ago, the city would have gotten more revenue, more product, more services. It's nobody's fault here around the horseshoe that that didn't happen. But right now, Comcast and AOL Time Warner are purchasing Adelphia and eventually, the city of Los Angeles will have more or less one operator, AOL Time Warner. And I urge us, as these negotiations go forward, on both the transfers of ownerships and the renewal of the franchises, that we set timetables and deadlines and make the big ask. The big ask is, improve customer service, reasonable rates, and products introduced into the marketplace that make sense. Better public educational and government access commitments, and most importantly, service that could become stellar rather than some of the aspects of service in the past. The good news is AOL Time Warner has a good service record. They've treated their customers well, but I think it's a sad day that we've gone three years without renewal of the franchises and now we're in the huge acquisition merger phase and we need to stay focused. I want to thank you for what you shared with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we had an opportunity in audits and government efficiency to hear this audit and review some of the issues that you've raised today as well, Mr. Rosendahl. The department did, I think, the smart thing, which is they agreed with everything that was in the Controller's Audit and indicated that either they had already implemented, i.e. the auditing to happen, rather than several years to happen in the timeline in which it's required, as well as some of the other customer service issues. Colleagues, one of the important aspects of this is customer service. I cannot tell you, I mean, I have a large area that is represented by Adelphia. And I just received an email yesterday about an individual who said, you know, I want to have Adelphia cable and they're telling me they never came and hooked up cable in my neighborhood. It's going to cost me $2,000 to put up, so I will be sending that to you.
Okay.
Access for them in Sherman Oaks. I mean, we're not talking about rural areas of my district. So, I think what we all want to make sure is that as we renegotiate, and it has been way too long that this negotiation has taken place, we made that point in committee. I know Ms. Hahn is Chair of the committee, feels very strongly about that, is going to move forward on these issues. One item that was discussed in committee, and I'm not sure if Mr. Rosendahl brought this up, was the definition of gross revenue and the change of that definition and what it would mean. Could you, you know, explain that, the difference there and what that would mean for the city of Los Angeles in having a clearer definition?
Gross revenue is what the receipts are for the companies and the city of Los Angeles is due 5% of gross revenues. Where, when we've done the various audits and tried to negotiate on behalf of the city, we have a very broad view of gross revenue in the current franchise agreements. And it's been an issue with the cable companies as to what gross revenue is on their side. In negotiations now, I think agreeing to a clear definition that is agreed to on both sides will be beneficial to the city where we come together. But there is definitely the dynamics of, these companies are for profit and the city is not. We operate in the interest of the public. So, we have some competing interests. It's my hope, however, that we will be able to reach an agreement of gross revenue and not get into that argument every time we do an audit for franchise fees.
Well, and I think, colleagues, we all read about the Desperate Housewives incident and the lost, no pun intended, when they lost cable and ability. And meeting with KABC where they, after 8 o'clock on that night, there was no service for Channel 7. They lost revenue in that process. We were told that Adelphia would reimburse people who had their cable, who lost that service or weren't able to watch the shows that they normally did. But the only way that you receive that dollar back is if you called and complained. And what I think we found is that people in the city of Los Angeles, our constituents have said, nothing we do is going to change this. We're not going to call. Well, you know, I think there were probably thousands of people, either one, wanted to call, two, got a busy signal when they called and gave up, and they never received that benefit of a dollar. And in some ways, it's symbolic, but I think in any franchise agreement as we go forward and what we've learned from this audit is to ensure that there are very much checks and balances and accountability and ways in which we, as the city of Los Angeles, our constituents ask us, you know, you give the franchises, how come you can't force them to provide the service they said they were going to provide? And I think as Ms. Hahn moves forward in her committee, being able to put some teeth in those agreements to protect our customers and our constituencies is really very, very important. So, I know you agree with that and are going to come forward and be able to respond in a more timely manner. a more timely manner on all of these items that the auditor, Controller has put forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, former cable executive Bill Rosendahl and my colleague Wendy Grul for really articulating, I think, what all of us want to see happen as we move forward, and I appreciate the Controller's report. But I, you know, I will say, you know, it wasn't fortunate that we did not renew these cable franchises when we had the opportunity. But members, it's really, it's our responsibility, so at this point, it's hard to put a blame on anybody but us. It's really the city council's purview to renew these cable franchises. And really, ITA has certain responsibilities in terms of paying attention to what the revenue we're collecting, but I appreciate the Controller bringing up that some of those numbers were off and we weren't collecting what we needed to collect. But it's really the city attorney and the city council that moved forward to renew these cable franchises and negotiate that. So really, we have a little bit of the blame on why these cable franchises were not renewed. It's unfortunate for me as I'm starting to understand this huge transfer that we're making to Time Warner. And unfortunately, we're going to, the transfer is going to happen before we have renewed these cable franchises, and that's unfortunate. And we probably could have averted that if we had done it three years ago. But the timing now is that the transfer is going to happen first, and then we're going to still be negotiating these cable franchise renewals. So I think that's unfortunate. However, I want to make sure that we take the Controller's concerns as we move forward and that the city attorney, who has put together this negotiating team, really has our deal points solidly before them. And ultimately, we want to get the best deal for our customers, and we want to build in accountability, as Councilwoman Grul said, for when they don't live up to what we have required of them. And we want good government access. We want more channels. We want, but we really want accountability, and when they, when something goes wrong, we want to make sure that the burden is not on the customer to prove that something went wrong. When something goes wrong, we want that burden to be on the cable operators, and they are the ones that need to really provide restitution back to the customer. So as we move forward in these negotiations, that's what I want to make sure happens. But we do appreciate the Controller's audit, and we want to make sure as we move forward that we can keep tabs on what these, this cable owner is doing. Colleagues, you know, Time Warner, while they have a good customer service record so far, they've actually had a small percentage of the customers in Los Angeles. They've had, I think, maybe a quarter, maybe less than 25%. They are moving in this transfer to over 95% of now the customers will be in their purview. So while they brag about the small number of customer complaints they've gotten, they've had a small number of customers. They will practically triple the number of customers in this transfer. So that's the kind of things I'm concerned with, and they have projected to have a seamless transition. But one of the things, colleagues, I want us to all be paying attention to is how they're going to absorb the workers, how they treat the workers, and whether or not these workers can have the same kind of benefits they've been able to enjoy with the other cable owners. So let's all pay attention to this. Let's keep on top of this. It's unfortunate that we let these cable franchises lapse. It's all of our, all of our faults. But as we move forward, I still think we can get the best deal for the residents of Los Angeles, and that's what we need to hold fast on as a city council. Thank you.
Ms. Labange.
Technical question. On Channel 35, it's on cable, right? They provide that?
Yes.
And then satellite doesn't provide that?
Correct.
Why not?
Well, it's my understanding that the satellite companies have not been interested in providing public education and government access, and it's an overall policy decision of satellite providers. The cable industry has stepped up to the plate to provide public education.
Well, they did in the beginning because they had to come in and use our streets to lay the cable, to do that.
That's correct.
Would you get back to me in my office so I could share with my colleagues how we can make sure all citizens get access to government, whether it's the county board of supervisors, the state legislature, or the United States Congress, or this city council, on the issue of satellites?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Resheim.
Thank you, Mr. President. A question regarding the contract renewal. Since I've been here, it's always been a continuation of the existing contract, never renewal. We talk about renewal, but we never seem to come to that. And I don't know of any of them that have been renewed, they just keep getting extended. Can you explain why in the last over four years? And also, when's the last time one was actually renewed versus gotten extension? So there's two questions.
Okay. The, there've been, the actual agreements were negotiated in 1987 and were extended over 15 years to build out infrastructure, return on investment, and those kinds of things. The cable industry as a whole has changed dramatically in 15 years. Different companies are operating in the different areas today than were 15 years ago in the 14 franchise areas that the city oversees. In terms of the negotiations for renewal, the beginning of that was the Needs Assessment Report, as I described earlier. The city wanted, at the direction of the council in 1999, to reach out to the very diverse community that we have, identify what their needs and interests were. That was accomplished and delivered to the council in 2003. That was really to be the springboard to begin negotiations. Even during the timeframe, a lot of changes have transpired within the industry. Adelphia's bankruptcy, different cable buyouts. Now we're looking at transfers of ownership in the bigger picture for the City of Los Angeles, but it's not just impacting us here, it's impacting the nation, nationwide. This is a nationwide effort and undertaking. In terms of, the negotiations are underway today, and I really think that the city as a whole not only had to do the needs assessment, but identify our priorities as well. Those have been done. The priorities have been done. The negotiating team is at the table for renewals, not just for an extension. The extensions ended, I believe it was August of this year. That was the last extension. The companies are operating on a month-to-month basis while we're in negotiations.
And then the rates that they pay, have those been adjusted while this time has passed?
Rates have changed, and the council has been communicated when there have been any rate changes in any of the areas. The city has the responsibility to oversee and regulate the basic rate. The other packages like premium packages, Showtime, HBO, those are not packages that the city has regulatory authority over as granted by the Federal Communications Commission. But the basic rates have changed. I will say that in the consumer, on the consumer side, in the consumer reports that we've done, we've actually seen decreases in complaints about the various cable companies. It could be, as your council member identified, they're tired of calling, they don't think they'll get any response. But our, the new customer service standards and Bill of Rights have really set the stage for other, as a model, for other cities in America to follow. And really, those will begin with the new franchise negotiations or in January, whichever comes first.
And are the fees to the city, have those increased? Have those been adjusted in the last few years when we go to these continuations and extensions?
We only have the opportunity to collect 5% of the gross revenues. We've been aggressive in our pursuits of audit and have collected additional dollars from past and overpayments that we've found underpayments in. But the rates and the dollars coming into the city has increased, but remained, we have less cable subscribers today. So as the rates have actually increased and the cable subscribers have decreased, the rates have stabilized the revenue coming into the city.
And those that have decreased are going to DISH and to other media access?
That's believed to be the case. There are other competitive markets now, today, that the consumers have a choice to choose what they want and at the price they want.
Now DSL, which, we get money on the DSL lines from the phone company, or no?
We do not.
We do not. So as the cable industry, as you mentioned, it keeps changing, and I go way back to the day where they had that little antenna called the Z channel, which you had one channel, what was it? Theta cable, one channel. And obviously, it's exploded in number since then. As the transition continues, we may find the cable industry evaporating and another group coming in, whether it be through the phone company, or through the DISH, or through the satellite, or some other means. We have no control over those, and we receive no revenues, and we can't coordinate anything on the pricing for the consumer. Is that correct?
That's correct, and the mayor has actually formed a task force to look at overall tax revenues coming into the city. Because as you're pointing out, this is a bigger picture than just the revenues received from the cable industry. The technology itself has changed dramatically, will continue to change dramatically. It's a mobile and global world today, and a telephone company isn't a telephone company like we used to know it. A cable company is not a cable company like we used to know it. And for the city to be on the front end of good, effective policy as it relates to taxes is very important.
And what's our annual revenues from cable television for the City of Los Angeles?
Annual revenue is about $23 million.
So $23 million. But as it phases out, as you say, the numbers are going down, numbers of subscribers, even though with the Time Warner merge and the Adelphia swap, et cetera, we may find those dollars, $23 million, reducing to a lower level and nothing substituting that for the benefit of the taxpayers.
Unless the companies step up to the plate and give the consumers what they want, good rates, quality service.
But I'm talking about revenues the city receives, franchise fees, et cetera.
If subscribers increase because the companies are providing what they want, good rates, quality service, the subscribers have the potential to increase as opposed to decrease.
But only in the cable industry, not in the other technology that continues to emerge for the viewing population?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I appreciate this dialogue, a lot of information coming out in this discussion. One thing that struck me, and I just wanted to get an understanding, being, I'm not too familiar with all the dynamics in the cable industry, but there's a mention that we were separating the transfer ownership and renewal, those two processes. My question is, why don't we tie them together? The assumption being that that might give us better leverage in dealing with our position as a city. Can you speak to that?
I think who would be best to speak with that? The CLA's office is actually leading the negotiations along with the city attorney, and ITA's role has been to provide staff support to the negotiating team. So I'm not the one that can answer that question.
I appreciate that.
I would say that since we're in negotiation, I would recommend that that dialogue be done with the CLA and the city attorney in your office, or in a closed session with the council.
Into any specifics, it should be done in closed session, but essentially, the regulations on transfers and franchise renewals are much different. The city is restricted on the basis on which it can accept or reject a transfer, and there's a fair amount of flexibility in renewals. So they're inherently separate processes. Now, I will also tell you, though, that in the process of discussing with Time Warner the transfer of the Adelphia franchises, we are making them aware of the issues that are going to be important to the city vis-à-vis the renewals. So while they are technically separate processes, they are being done together. Now, timing-wise, the transfer is likely to occur unless Time Warner agrees on extensions. It's likely to occur before the renewals, but it's all going to be done with an awareness of where the city is going and what it needs to get on the franchise renewals.
And what strikes me is that in the past, we've had to play a role in talking about how cable can become publicly accessible, how you enhance diversity in the quality of the programming. We had a group, CTV, that was being shut out by certain entities, and they wanted to participate and be part of the LA market, and they had to go through all these judo moves just to try to get to the door.
Yeah.
So to me, when we talk about quality of life and what we do as stewards, how we handle our ability to create accessibility and diversity in programming, I mean, those are elements that are also, I think, under our purview if we're the ones dealing with the transfer ownership or renewal. And again, I don't want to go into a sensitive legal
Sure.
territory, but I'd like to get, maybe we should do this in closed session and find out what truly is our leveraging potential? How do we look at this opportunity? How do we minimize monopolies so that we can have great accessibility, diversity, and competition? And so those are the kinds of notions I would like to hear more about.
Well, we'll be back to the ITGS committee, of course, and the full council on status of things and to get direction from the council on what the priorities are, explain, you know, where the leverage is and where the leverage is not, what appears feasible and what doesn't appear feasible. Certainly, public access, you know, PEG channels are going to be an important part of the discussion. The technology today allows for even focusing on individual communities so that neighborhood councils can have access, high school football games, you know, video on demand, for example, all of those technological issues, which really weren't possible five years ago, are now possible. So to some degree, although clearly the city delayed a long time in the franchise renewals, to some degree, there is some benefit to that because we are today in a much different situation technologically, and we can put other things on the table that we simply couldn't have five years ago.
So this be coming back to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just want to thank my colleagues, first of all, for the robust discussion that we all had on this issue, especially the Chair of the Committee, Janice Hahn, and all the others. And I want to thank you all for coming up with no notice, frankly, and I apologize for that, but I think the public needs to know what's really going on. Just one question for ITA. Many of our constituents have been asking for the Logo channel and Soapnet, and these are channels that would require some kind of commitment by the operators, and we're not getting a straight answer except a long delay. The Logo channel is a gay, bisexual, lesbian, transgender channel. It's in San Francisco and other places. There's been reluctance to launch it here, and I'd like to get a report back on how we can get that. And the Soapnet has got a lot of LA people, and when we talk about runaway productions, it's produced here, and it's a dramatically good channel as well as is Logo. And I'd like to get a report on the status of getting them on the cable systems in Los Angeles. And again, thank you all for sharing everything with us. Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, let's open the roll of this report, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's item 21. That is approved. Next item, please.
Our next item is President, item number 24. That was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we ask, come on up, Greg Nelson and the city attorneys, too? I'm smiling, Greg, because someone's called you Greg Smith, but he corrected me. It's Greg Nelson, of course.
I would consider that an honor.
And who's joining us from the city attorney's office?
Valerie Flores. I'm the Managing Assistant of the Public Integrity Unit.
Could you just give us a quick summary of what this item is about here?
This is an item that was sent to council from committee. During committee, I gave a report where we noted that the city attorney's office is doing a strategic review of the entire neighborhood council system. The goal of the review is to make sure that the neighborhood council system reaches its full potential. Our work, we hope, will assist the council and also the new commission that is being formed under Charter Section 912 to evaluate the current system and to make sure that it's on the right track and tweak it if not. The first report that we wrote involved the application of the Political Reform Act to neighborhood councils. As a result of our report and some of the problems that we noted with the application of the disclosure rules to the neighborhood council board members, the council passed an ordinance exempting the board members from Form 700 filing requirements. The second report in the series involved the application of the Brown Act to neighborhood councils. The third in the series, which is currently being drafted, will The third in the series, which is currently being drafted, will assess what is the legal status of neighborhood councils? Are they independent entities of a grassroots nature, or are they formal components of city government? And this analysis will make a huge impact both for the city and the neighborhood councils in terms of what laws apply to them, what the financial impact will be on the city in terms of liability.
Both ways.
It will also potentially impact the neighborhood councils in terms of what contracting rules they have to follow, what civil service provisions apply to them, et cetera. The fourth in the series of reports will address the circumstances under which state and federal election laws could become applicable to neighborhood councils, and that will assess what sorts of powers they could get that would trigger those laws. If those laws are triggered, the neighborhood council system would have to be reformulated because the Voting Rights Act and due process and equal protection would apply to the district formation. The most recent report I gave in more detail on the Brown Act assessed whether the Brown Act was applicable to neighborhood councils, which it is, and whether the Brown Act with its full rigors and harsh penalties is a good fit for neighborhood councils. The neighborhood councils have really embraced the spirit and purpose of the Brown Act. Even before they were formed, the charter envisioned that neighborhood councils would conduct their meetings openly and with inclusiveness. But because they were created by charter, the Brown Act with all of its rigors was triggered. And so now the neighborhood councils, who have very little staff and no central headquarters, find themselves facing a lot of questions in terms of how do they get their agendas posted, and how can they communicate board member to board member through email and subcommittees when a lot of those communications are prohibited by the Brown Act. The report that we wrote on the Brown Act assessed two potential remedies to keep neighborhood council meetings open, but relieve the neighborhood councils of some of the rigors of the Brown Act. The first would require an entire restructuring of the neighborhood councils and would require them to reformulate as nonprofit entities, and perhaps then delink them from the Brown Act. That's a, it's something that the Charter Commission Exploring Neighborhood Councils may take up, but another option would be to get a state legislative exemption. The Brown Act is a state law, and it can be amended by the state legislature. After we wrote our opinion, Assemblymember Ridley Thomas did, in fact, introduce a bill to relieve some of the harsher rules of the Brown Act from the neighborhood council operations. And that bill is currently inactive, but Dunn is going to form a working group to get the neighborhood councils to weigh in on how they feel about exempting themselves from certain provisions of the Brown Act, and if they do that, which ones they think are the most onerous. The committee also expressed an interest in having the newly-formed Charter Section 912 Commission look at the issue of the Brown Act and its application to neighborhood councils.
I want to thank you very much for that report. I wanted the cable viewers and the neighborhood council people to hear what my colleague Janice Hahn and I heard firsthand in our committee meeting. I think you did an incredible job in outlining it. Would you please explain a little bit more about the 912 Commission?
Certainly. Would you like me to do that, or would you like Mr. Nelson to do that?
Either one, or both.
Greg Nelson, General Manager, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. The city charter requires that by the middle of next year that the city council and the mayor form and appoint a special commission to review the neighborhood council system, and that the process for doing that be done through ordinance. And the charter is just that vague. So the process has started now in the education and neighborhoods committee to begin starting to discuss which items should be included in the ordinance. Should the ordinance itself be vague and permissive to the commission, or should it be specific? And we are at the point now where this chief legislative analyst has identified some of those areas. It has been circulated by the committee to the neighborhood councils, and the plan is to take this up, begin discussions in committee in mid-December.
And then take us through the rest of the timetable as you would see us getting toward July 1.
I think the rest of the timetable will probably help be set by the city attorney. If they are asked to write a complex ordinance, then naturally they're going to need quite a bit of time, probably, to do that, and it depends upon its complexities. But, yeah, the timetable is kind of driven by, I think, where those discussions beginning in mid-December are going to take us, because maybe then we can begin identifying if it's going to be a 50-page ordinance or one.
And once we have an ordinance in place, the 912 Commission, which is a name we're starting to create here right now in dialogue, would do what?
The ordinance will define what the commission does, and it is possible that the commission could be given the full rein of looking at every part of the neighborhood council system: my department, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, the neighborhood councils themselves, the city council and its relationship to the neighborhood councils. Or the ordinance could limit what areas we would like them to look at and make recommendations to the mayor and the city council on.
Would you like to add anything to it?
No, we're ready to begin work, roll up our sleeves, and really help neighborhood councils reach their full potential.
I just might add that Ms. Flores is the daughter of Joan Milky Flores, who used to be a member of this city council, and it's terrific to see you in public service in government.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
And I want to say to all neighborhood council people listening to this, this is now the opportunity to get engaged in the process, and to all my colleagues on the council, we have a window to review, reflect, and see what neighborhood councils mean to us in bringing the city together, what forces and powers we want it to give it, and it's a terrific time for us to make the democracy work. And I want to thank the two of you for sharing with everybody here the status of the program.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, the new committee chair for education and neighborhood. You're doing such a good job of really taking a lot of these issues forward, and I appreciate the report from the city attorney on these two issues. But colleagues, we are at a great time in the city of Los Angeles, because we are once again going to have the opportunity to have the great civic debate, which we had in 1997 through 1999. Dennis remembers that, where we actually reformed our city charter, and Section 912 says that no less, no more than seven years after the adoption of the charter, which was in 1999, should we begin reviewing this whole section on neighborhood councils, how these neighborhood councils actually have morphed and what's happened? And frankly, members, what I've been doing on the committee and what I think Bill is seeing is that we've been really taking these difficult issues that have come that haven't worked well, and then we on the city council have been amending, creating ordinances. We allowed our neighborhood councils to opt out of that very difficult Form 700 that all of us have to fill out as elected officials. But now we're getting into the Brown Act, and whether or not that applies or not, and there's legislation that could be pending that could opt them out. But I think we should hold all of our changes at this point, and I know a lot of people want to make a lot of changes, whether it's the definition of stakeholder, or I know something came up in your committee, Tom, about every neighborhood council should have a youth seat. This is the time, colleagues, where we're going to debate how these neighborhood councils are working. Are they fulfilling their mission? Are they empowered? Are they encumbered by rules that actually cut the power out from under them? Are they reaching out to all the stakeholders? Are they really reaching the people that need to have a voice in government? This is the time when we're all going to be able to appoint someone, much like the Charter Commission in 1997, that will begin holding public meetings, will have the weigh-in and the input from neighborhood councils on things they would like to see us change in the future. So I'm hoping that we take the city attorney's report and we help incorporate in this debate. But I'm hoping that we really let this commission now really review neighborhood councils. Are they what we want them to be? Are they working? Are they empowering? Are they the real voice in the city? And then hopefully the commission will make recommendations back to the city council, and if we have to make charter changes at that point, they become ballot measures. So keep taking the input, but I don't think this is the time for any of us to make any changes now in the framework of neighborhood councils. Let's let this commission have another great civic debate. It's hard to believe that it's been seven years since that charter was adopted. First neighborhood council was in 2001, Wilmington, so they've been operating five years. So it's time to really review them and see whether or not, what's the next step as a city? What's the next step for empowering residents of Los Angeles in having a real voice in their government? So thank you for this report.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the observations from my colleague, Councilmember Hahn. But I think if we're going to go there, if it's going to be of substance, we need to understand what our obligation is from a fiduciary point of view. Now, in my experiences in dealing with the Plum Committee out in the city, we're dealing with issues of housing and the very popular inclusionary zoning, that we actually heard folks say, "We don't have the support system to have neighborhood council folks understand the impact of critical issues like development in their neighborhood." We have not given the proper support systems to the departments to establish that type of information to these bodies. What is their role? What gets them upset most? It usually is development. Whether you're supporting housing or against it, you strike a live wire, there's a nerve there that gets touched, and people react emotionally without any regard with the legal impacts, with the fiduciary impacts. And we haven't given them the staff to understand that. We haven't been thorough or supportive to the departments that need to address that, whether it's the city attorney's office, the planning department. We just began to provide the type of funds to hire the people so that you don't have one planner doing four jobs with the neighborhood councils, the area planning commission, and the commission-wide type of obligations that they have. So it's great to talk about this. It sounds nice. Democracy sounds great, but when you look at it, we have not given them the proper financial support from a staffing point of view when it comes to issues of planning and legal impacts, not only on themselves as individuals, but themselves as a body, and the impact on the city. So I think we've done them a big disservice in not addressing that as well. I don't know, rather being aggressive here, but the bottom line is, that's what I heard over and over and over again when I was dealing with the inclusionary zoning issue, when I was dealing with the Plum Committee meetings out in the neighborhood. And I thanked my colleagues as they stepped up. We provided nine positions to the planning department. The question is, is that enough? And what does the neighborhood council expect from us? And let's put our money where the mouth is. Otherwise, it's just a lot of gestures, a lot of time spent verbalizing notions with no implementation, because no one understands the legal implications, the zoning implications, development rights, property rights, and community rights. And I think that's the substance we need to hit. So I appreciate this opportunity to share those thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 32, called special by Councilmember Zein.
Let's send item 24 forthwith, please. Mr. Zein.
Thank you. We have staff here on item number 32, please. Good morning once again.
Good morning.
You guys rested up for a second round?
I think so. We're ready.
All right. Where are we on this program so we don't have another mishap?
We are currently conducting training with all the council offices. We'll be conducting training with all of our contracted operators, and we hope to have the system up and running in January 2006.
Okay, what are we doing between now and January 2006 to make sure that we don't have problems with the Charter Bus Program where, I believe, all the officers work together with DOT to provide those buses to the community members, nonprofits in particular?
Well, one thing, we're reviewing all the training, all of the processes, the steps that we need to take with our two staff. We just filled the second position that we had that were vacant during the summer, so that's going to be a big step forward for us. We're fully staffed to operate the program. We'll be reviewing all of the, again, the steps that they need to follow to make sure that things are done correctly, and we'll be entering all the data into the system so that we're ready to go in January.
And then what about the buses, companies that aren't being responsive, the ones that have missed schedules, the ones that don't seem to be working to a level of satisfaction to us in the community?
Yeah, we are working with your office on some of the problems you've had with one company in particular. We have assessed performance penalties, and we'll continue to look at additional performance penalties, and we'll also look to other companies. If they're not doing a job, we'll go to other companies to make sure that they get the new job right.
Okay, the one school in my district that was not able to attend that King Tut event, we were able to bring a check to them, which I personally delivered, and they were very pleased.
Great.
And I hope that they will be able to view that exhibit before it leaves Los Angeles. How many buses do each council office get annually?
We have 11,000 trips total.
It depends on the type of service that's ordered based on the budget, because each trip costs differently. But you have approximately $86,000 allocated to each office, and we keep track as you consume that amount in your one fiscal year.
And an organization can use a bus how many times in the calendar year?
That, again, is an internal council office policy. Most offices seem to limit each organization to two.
Okay, because I was aware that one individual would use from my office and go around to the other offices and get buses, and then charge the people to go to the events. So he was basically charging people to go to the events and getting free buses from the city.
We do not monitor to that extent of detail, because the trips are authorized by the council offices themselves, but I assume with the web-based system, we'll be able to look at those things a lot more closely also.
So I think we need to establish a policy whereby it's fair and consistent throughout the city, so an individual or individuals don't take advantage. You have 15 council offices, an individual comes to 15 offices and gets two buses for 15 offices versus a group that's following the procedure. I understand it was two per year, and many groups are following what we've established as a procedure. I thought that was a city procedure. I think we need to work in that area so we have some consistency, so it's not abused, because if one individual takes it, then that's not going to permit the other nonprofits to use it, and many of our senior groups, I know, rely upon that for their outings on an annual basis.
We agree.
We can, with the new system, run cross-checks, and what we can do is we can inform the council offices that this particular group had obtained buses from other council offices, and the decision would still rest up to the council person.
I understand. I think that the council office know it, it will be advantageous for them. I found out by just coincidence, and we informed this individual that it wasn't proper what he was doing, but what happens, charge the people, but get the buses for free, and that's really not what it's a business for. The criteria to qualify, is it the council office discretion, or is it DOT's policy?
To qualify to obtain a bus?
Yes.
It cuts up to the council office.
So the council
The program does have procedures as to the types of services we can provide. For example, we cannot provide a trip for political use. But again, if you're within those criteria, then it's up to the council office whether or not we will book the trip or not.
And each office gets approximately $86,000?
Each office gets the same and equal amount.
So if you use a big bus, it's more expensive than a small bus?
That's correct, or a coach bus is more expensive than a school bus, for example.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I look forward to that online January to remedy any of these embarrassments, because they look at the council offices providing the bus, they forget about DOT, and the council office has to do the explanation, and oftentimes these groups don't want to accept that explanation. So I appreciate the endeavor to make it work for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much. I just got an email from a middle school, and they said, "How could we, you know, they've used the bus program in the past, but they're within two blocks of the red line. Could we alter this bus charter program to..." Because some schools are going to be on the red line, they're schools are gonna be on the red line, the orange line, the blue line, the green line, so that they're within walking distance of the subway system or a light rail system, that they'd be eligible for some passes on that? Have you thought about this? Is this a new idea?
It's a new idea.
All right. I want a motion there, Avak. I want a motion to ask that DOT look to create an opportunity for schools that are within walking distance of fixed transit, that they will work with. And then would you then pay the MTA for... How do you do it?
We'd probably have to purchase passes or work with the MTA.
Purchase passes. So then I will do that with Avak and come back to you. But it made sense. Do you think it makes sense?
Certainly, on the surface, it certainly makes sense. We can do it.
I mean, if it makes sense, they get on the MetroLink maybe and come downtown. Dennis, you're a Valley man. Take the MetroLink, the orange line, come downtown. What do you think?
I wasn't following your line of questions.
Basically, a teacher just sent me an email from Thomas Stark King Middle School, and it talks about they're going to the Museum of Contemporary Art. They're two blocks from the subway station in Sunset and Vermont. So instead of getting a bus, they'd walk to the subway. So could the charter program be advanced to be some kind of relationship so that they could use, whether it's MetroLink from Chatsworth or Orange Line from your district?
I would... Mr. President, if you'll indulge on this, I don't think we've ever expanded it, but it's a wonderful idea. If they want to come to City Hall, like from the Valley, we can get them to the Orange Line. And if we can have some arrangement that they would be able to come in the Orange Line instead of bringing a bus, it'd be a wonderful opportunity.
And they experience transit. I'll do a motion to ask Avak to draft a motion, and then come to committee and try to resolve it.
Well, I think it's a lot less hassle, and however we could work that out with MTA. But I think everyone benefits, because then we can load them up on an orange line to the red line, show them our public transit system. Instead of the Charter Bus that picks them up, it's close to that transit line.
Perhaps we can reimburse the group, a school or whatever that goes out and buys these passes. We can reimburse the group for that dollar amount through the Charter Bus account for that particular council office.
Well, we could buy... I know it was 15 cents when I was in school.
It's 25 cents now.
It's a youth rate now? It's 25 cents?
I think they have discount rates, but the $3 will let you go on the public transit all day.
Yeah, but it should be a buck for children during off-peak hours or something. Anyway, we'll work on it. Is Avak around? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Before we take up the next item, I believe Mr. Garcetti's questions have been answered on item 49. We can proceed with the votes. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 34 was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han.
This is yours. 34. Oh, oh, oh.
Can I have somebody come up to the table? Anybody? I just think my colleagues and I would be interested in trying to understand this consulting service contract, what it entails, what's the scope, how are you doing outreach. And this is really about spending $600,000 to hire a consultant to do outreach on Prop O. Is this how we spend the money? It's which projects are gonna be? So maybe you can answer to all of our satisfaction. What exactly are we spending this money on and why?
Well, I'll start from the CLA perspective. I think the contract is, I think it's primarily geared towards getting community involvement on projects. I mean, we're in lockstep with the Citizens Oversight Committee, and I can certainly speak for the Administrative Oversight Committee, is that we don't want projects to all be generated internally. And a lot of what this contract is for is for outreach and to provide technical support for the COAC and for Neighborhood Councils, and basically anybody in the community that wants to develop projects that might be eligible. And this contract would work with them on how to package the projects, what the qualifications are, help them through the process.
So this is about getting projects that maybe haven't been identified yet?
Absolutely.
How does this mesh with the application process of projects that we already have identified and are actually applying for money for?
Well, we're now in the first call for projects process. It opened on October 15th, as I recall, and then it closes on December 15th. So again, I think it's intended to work in lockstep during this period and during future call periods.
How is that possible? We're applying for specific projects, and this is an opportunity for brand-new projects to be brought to the forefront for Prop O money. I don't see how that works together.
Well, there'll be a number of application time periods. This first one is just the initial project. So what this would...
Have we applied for Prop... Are we... Is the application process moving forward for Prop O?
It is open. The first period is open now. There will be multiple other periods where projects are identified. The only project that has actually been approved by Prop O is the catch basin inserts. So essentially, everything else right now is in the process of having applications submitted and prepared. And the idea of the contractor, whether it's for this current period that's open and for future periods, is to have somebody available to work with the communities to help them identify the projects.
Are we gonna prioritize projects?
Yes.
And how does that happen?
Well, perhaps, why don't you?
There's a... I'm Doug Walters with the Bureau of Sanitation, Watershed Protection Division. And yes, there's a project review committee that will look at all the projects that are submitted by the deadline, which is December 16th, some of which will come from community organizations, others from city departments, and some from, we expect, from your offices and potentially the mayor's office.
Yeah, I have a few in already.
Wonderful. So we will look at all of those. The consultant contract will help provide the technical assistance to those that are lacking in information, that are maybe people that are not familiar with the TMDL concept or water quality issues, to try and make it a uniform, consistent application so that they would be all eligible for Prop O funding. And at that point, we would prioritize those applications and move them forward to the COAC and the AOC.
How is this consultant doing outreach to Neighborhood Councils and other community organizations?
Quite an elaborate array of information that's getting out through flyers, through personal phone calls to Neighborhood Councils. There's applications in all of the council members' offices for the funds. There's packages in each of your field offices for them to get the information. There's information on our LASTormwater.com website on how to get the information as well.
And here's my concern. My concern is $600,000 is a lot of money for consultants to do outreach. I never think we do outreach well. I don't care who we hire. I don't care how we try to do it. If you have the first deadline being in December, I venture to say, most of these Neighborhood Councils probably do not have it on their agenda. You know, they have to always kind of take a couple months to agendize things and go through committees and take a formal vote. My council staff monitors the Neighborhood Councils in my council district pretty closely, and I'm not aware of any Prop O information, presentation having happened in any of my Neighborhood Councils. Do you know if they have been making... It's gotta do more than just put stuff on a website and expect people to log on and check it out. Outreach is a very difficult process.
Yes.
And Neighborhood Councils don't necessarily outreach as much as they should. But I'm just very concerned at this price tag. And, you know, so far, I don't feel like I know what's going on with this consulting.
Yeah. A portion, a large portion of that $600,000 is not just outreach. It's for the technical assistance to provide people the understanding of what Prop O is all about, what the criteria is.
Well, that's outreach. I mean, that's outreach.
But helping them with their applications and making sure they address water quality issues if they want to do an improvement.
So is this person going to the Neighborhood Councils and getting in subcommittees that may be dealing with this and explaining, or are they having Saturday workshops? What are they doing? I guess, what are they doing?
There's five workshops that are scheduled from November 9th through November 16th. They happen on either evenings or on Saturdays in five different portions of the city: South LA, East LA, West Side, Valley, NDWP.
And do you think if I call my Neighborhood Councils today, they would be aware of these meetings?
They've all been sent that information, whether or not they've...
But would they be aware of these meetings?
Read of it. I couldn't tell you that. I don't know. I know they've all been contacted.
Well, you know, we've heard that before, that Neighborhood Councils have been contacted. But, you know, how is that happening? Are we calling?
All of the presidents have been being called. So it's up to those presidents of those councils to whether or not they want to add it to their agenda, or put it in their newsletter to advertise these workshops. Keep in mind, as Mr. Miller said earlier, that this is just the first cycle of projects. There'll be another cycle of April through June, as established by the COAC oversight. So this is just the beginning of a long process. But we want to get the word out early to let them know Prop O is $500 million, to be thinking about ideas to bring forward to us. So not everybody was gonna get their application in by December 16th. There'll be plenty of other times, other cycles...
Well, I'm gonna be calling my Neighborhood Councils to see if they've ever heard of this. And I'll have a report. I think the rest of council members should do the same thing, see if this is working or not. Thank you.
Sure, certainly.
Mr. Labange.
Just on Prop O, where do you start in Prop O? You're going from the ocean, and then where are you coming up?
It's basically to address all the water feds.
I know. Start from the ocean and come up. Visualize for me. I just want to have that.
Geographically speaking, Viona Creek, if you're in the Santa Monica Bay region, upwards all through Atwater, Silver Lake, and up into the valleys, all the outreaches...
The river, and then from the river, where do you go?
Up until any of those watersheds that, up into Bell Canyon.
Right. All right. But where else do you go?
Wherever citizens want a project, we'll look at anywhere.
I understand that. But I don't see anything here. I was tricking you, Doug. You're a good man. I don't mean to trick a good man. But the curb and gutter, 80% of all trash and debris is at the foot of the curb and gutter.
Yes.
And I see this calls for some people from authorities. Is that correct? These are authorities, the sanitation engineer?
Yes.
Senior management analyst, Bureau of Engineering, Bureau of Sanitation?
Right.
Okay. I want to add someone from the Bureau of Street Services. Ms. Han?
Yes.
Since you spoke so eloquently, I wanted to add a representative of the Bureau of Street Services, because 80% of all debris comes from the street and the curb and gutter. Because before, I know on Prop O, and I don't know, who was the author of Prop O? Do you know, Mr. President? Mr. Garcetti? You were the author?
It was Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Perry.
And Jan Perry? Jan, Mr. Garcetti, my problem with Prop O is the curb and gutter, and that drain, and that trash basket on the corner. And we're trying to do all that stuff beyond it. I want to get back to that first bit of trash that flies inadvertently, hopefully, from someone's hand that ends on a sidewalk that blows into the gutter. And I want Street Services in here somehow. And I want to ask Mr. Miller for help on this, because I think they're being cheated out. And they're the team that are supposed to keep the streets clean, and we're blinded by it.
Well, we certainly will help you, but it's important to recognize that Prop O is a general obligation bond, and it can only be used for real property. So we can't use it for street sweepers, for example. Those don't qualify. Now, the catch basins do, because that's part of real property.
Do the trash baskets, they're a catch basin?
The trash containers would not qualify, no.
Now, who made that decision?
State law.
Mr. Garcetti, you made that decision? Why the state law made that decision?
On a general obligation bond, that's the way the state law works. Now, obviously, part of your budget process and part of figuring out how these capital improvements are going to work operationally within the city, Street Services, and we had extensive conversations early on with them about what their street sweeping policies are, and how they identify key areas that are most problems, and how operationally we keep the trash from getting in there in the first place. But Prop O can't fund those.
It hurts me. Every time I pass a trash basket that's full, it hurts me, because I know it's gonna spill over in the gutter and go down a drain, and then we're gonna have to spend Prop O money for that when we could get to the root of the problem.
Mm-hmm.
So, Mr. Miller, I think we have to work on that, try to figure it out. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'll withhold my motion to put Street Services in here until such time that I figure a way to do it right, appropriately, with the approval of the CLA. Thank you.
Jerry, if I can suggest maybe working with a Prop O Oversight Committee and staff, reach back out to all the council offices, see if anybody needs a briefing or an update in their own offices to answer all these questions, because I know the item before is much narrower than the broad...
Absolutely.
...measure of conversation we just had. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That's approved. Next item, please.
Item number 39 was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Three times is a charm. This is the third one I've called special today. And the reason I've called it special is the seriousness of the issue. Obviously, everybody around this horseshoe agrees that our health care system is in a meltdown. It is truly a crisis. I know the county government has done quite a bit of work to try to bring things online, but I must say that our great nation is in a serious crisis. Over 40 million do not have health insurance. Emergency rooms are closing, hospitals are closing, trauma centers are closing. And it's frankly because the insurance companies and the drug companies control the political process in Washington. We should have national health care for all of our people as the richest country on earth. So I just want to acknowledge this is on our consent calendar that we need to get beyond it. And I will say this: If the state government and the Sheila Kuehl legislation for health care for all, the single payer, Medicare for all, doesn't happen, I am going to put an initiative in the city of Los Angeles that we incorporate, all four million of us, into a special form of corporation and create health care for our people. I am not gonna wait any longer for anybody else to do it. Sheila Kuehl is on the right track. Our people in Washington are gutless, and they won't deal with it. So we in the city of Los Angeles can take that leadership if we don't see it coming from Sacramento. And I will introduce that motion sometime next year if we don't see movement in Sacramento or Washington. We need a safety net for our people. We are the richest democracy on earth, and we don't have it for our people. And literally, people are dying who aren't getting quality health care. Have you ever been to an emergency room lately and seen how clogged up it is? Even when you have your health insurance, you can't get through the line. This is a huge crisis of national proportion. And we in Los Angeles are a city filled with good leadership. And I look forward to my colleagues and the mayor, if we don't see it happening on any other level of government, going forward with a model to make LA City Incorporated, ensure ourselves, and create health care for our people. More, and to be continued next year if we don't see it in Sacramento or Washington. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 50 was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Hello. I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions as to why we're usurping jurisdiction over this matter that through the Department of Water and Power. It's $103 million contract, and we have some questions. And I think it's only appropriate that the council asks those questions.
Mr. Labange.
Water and Power is here. Why don't you have Water and Power come to the table?
Unless any council member has any questions, we'll be taking care of this in policy matters in the committee. If you want to ask any questions, you're welcome.
Well, I just want to ask. Just, thank you. Since you asked a question, I'll take advantage of it. I read in the paper. Rich, you want to introduce yourself, Rich?
I'm Richard Harrisick, the program director of the Owens Lake Dust Mitigation Program.
So are we ahead or behind on that project?
We're right on pace. We are to be complete by the end of the calendar year next, and the construction project that the Commerce Committee will be looking at will be the final construction project to get us to that point.
This is good for you. This will help push it along.
Correct.
Good. All right. Thank you. Go into committee, and then it will be back here. How soon will it come back, Mr. Chair?
We'll have it back by next...
I'm sorry, can I?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I was on the queue, so I just wanted to...
Time out, time out. Quick response to Mr. Labange's question, and then, Mr. Labange, you have two minutes left on your clock. We have other members waiting to speak.
Within the next month or so, before the end of the year?
If everything goes well, we'll have it back within the next couple weeks or so.
Good. Great. Because I know we're very interested in solving that terrible problem up there. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
I guess I didn't understand your exchange with Mr. Cardenas. Is this a friendly 245?
I'm not gonna say it's friendly or not. We don't have the details to make a decision right now, so we're gonna cover it in council. Remember, this is $100 million on top of the $300-plus million they've already spent. So now you get an idea of how complicated the issue is.
No, no, but... So it's not a friendly 245. A friendly 245 is when something is introduced so that the council can basically waive its 245 rights immediately, allows the contract to go into place.
No, it's not a friendly 245.
When I heard out of the corner of my ear, Mr. Labange asked the gentleman at the table, "Would this help you?" And he said, "Yes, it'll help me." That made me think it was a friendly 245. So it's not a friendly 245. What is the... It's a big contract. Is there anything about the manner in which the contract was awarded that we need to know about before we vote on this today? about before we vote on this today? In other words, are you asking us to 245 this because it's a big number, or because there was something about the manner in which it was approved that concerns you?
The main reason is to find out how we arrived at this, going out for this contract, and how it fits in our obligations that the courts mandated that we mitigate it. So it's just technical matters and how it fits. I don't care if it's a $10 million contract or $103 million contract, which it is. The bottom line is, how does it fit? And are we convoluting ourselves into spending money and getting more and more contracts? Or are we doing, are we arriving at our solution efficiently and appropriately? So those are the technical discussions I plan on having in committee.
And how long has this contract been under discussion or consideration by the department?
Well, the bids were opened about 80 days ago or so for the contract, so.
And was there a contract that existed that preceded this contract on the same subject area?
Well, the program is a series of contracts to construct dust control measures on the lake, and this is the next series. This is the sixth construction contract that we've had up there for different phases of construction.
And so, I mean, again, just so I understand, you want to assert jurisdiction here just because it's a major policy issue?
That's a better way of putting it. It's a major policy issue.
Not because you're asserting that anything happened that shouldn't have happened, or vice versa? You just think, just because it's a major policy issue, it should be referred to the council?
I don't know if it's appropriate or not right now to let out this contract. I don't know yet. I have question marks, questions.
Can you give me a sense of what the questions are?
Sure, I plan on going over in committee. For example, this is connected on top of, how much have we mitigated, spent in mitigations on Owens Valley?
At Owens Lake, we're at $304 million to date.
To date, $304 million.
Hold on, before we get into the Q and A exchange with the staff, I think, Mr. Weiss, just want to get a sense for what kind of questions or issues you're seeking.
I think that's fine. I'll let Mr. Cardenas address that however he wants to. I'm happy to hear it.
I'm answering that.
Happy to hear it, yeah.
In the sense that this is.
Well, then I may do it on your time, Mr. Weiss.
That's fine.
$304 million already spent. This was estimated at a maximum of $150 million when it was signed off in the beginning, when the head of the department said, let's engage and do the right thing and mitigate this. They said it was $150 million. We're already $300 million into it. Now, we're talking about an additional $103 million. I need to find out if, in fact, this is appropriate, and if it's a proper use of funds in order to get to what our objective and our responsibility is, which is to mitigate this and get it under control. So, like I said earlier, it doesn't matter to me if it's a $10 million contract, a $103 million contract. I'm looking at it as that amount on top of $304 million, which a while ago, just a few years ago, we only anticipated spending $150 million.
When he says a while ago, how long ago was there an estimate that it was only going to cost $150 million to do this mitigation?
In 1998, the city of Los Angeles agreed with the local air district up there to fix the problem at Owens Lake.
The local, could you just?
The Great Basin Unified Air Pollution Control District in the Owens Valley. And the general manager at the time sold the city on the project for be actually $120 million. And since that time, we've obviously learned more, there wasn't much known at that time of what the project would entail. And so that's why Mr. Cardenas wants to know, you got from $120 to now $304. We're on record for the past couple of years, three years, two, three years, that would say it's going to be a $415 million project, and we're still projecting that that's what it will be.
Okay, I'll defer on my time for.
Mr. Cardenas.
Any more questions of me, Mr. Weiss? Okay.
Maybe we ought to switch places here.
Mr. Labange.
Say, members, Owens Lake is a terminal lake, meaning water that ran into the lake ended there. It didn't go out. So when it was diverted by Mulholland and others to Los Angeles, it became a dry, large area. How many square miles is it?
The lake is 110 square miles.
110 square miles. The city of Los Angeles, 472 square miles. The worst pollution in the country in Keeler, is it Keely, Keely?
Keeler and Dirty Socks.
Keeler is because of this here. So over the years, they've tried this mitigation, and it does cost a tremendous amount of money, and we should make our commitment there. Is that right, Ms. Harrisick?
Yes, sir, we have to fulfill our commitment.
Correct. So the committee will see this and see if it's justified, and we could either say it is justified or not. We can't change the contract or any rules in the contract. But I think if you haven't been to Owens Valley, go see it, because it is something that has been a challenge for us in Los Angeles for all these years, because the water didn't stop there. It didn't flow from Owens Lake, correct, Rich? It ended there. It's a terminal lake, right?
Correct.
It didn't flow, so the water died there. We just diverted it to Los Angeles. But it's created this impact, and when the wind blows, Jack, it blows, and it just blows all over. So this is trying to divert that. Thank you so much, and we'll see you when it comes back.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Actually, I rise to support questioning this contract, and I appreciate Councilman Cardenas bringing this up. I have been very concerned with how we got from $150 million to 400 and something million dollars. And I think it's becoming this place where we're just, we're throwing money at. And I have real concerns. We've been hearing from DWP employees who have been a little bit afraid to come forward with some of the allegations, but they have seen instances of contractor abuse. They've had instances of, we're paying way too much money for something. So there's a lot of concerns. It seems like we just keep throwing the money there, and we're not holding this contractor accountable. And I think part of what, Tony, we need to look at, if it comes back to our committee, is some of these employee allegations. These are the men and women who are out there on a daily basis and watching this contractor perform some of this work, and some of it has been questionable. And I think that's something, frankly, we ought to look at. So I think we ought to take another look at this. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I think we should assert our jurisdiction over this and take another look at it, and really bring some of these questions, particularly from the employees at the forefront, before we approve this.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I hadn't heard those comments before, and I appreciate Ms. Hahn's bringing my attention, because I think it's really changed my mind immediately on what needs to be talked about there. But my recollection is that we entered into this project not just with the AQMD up there, but we were being threatened with a lawsuit as well, weren't we, at the time?
That's correct.
So to try and get ahead of it, we went out and started doing this project. Were there discussions in that interim period, the last six years or so, seven years, which added additional things to that project at the request of AQMD up there, or the potential litigants in the case?
Yes, at the time, we agreed, it was only estimated that 22 and 1/2 square miles of dust control measures were going to have to be completed, as well as, within the agreement, it says that the air district up there would be able to come back in 2003 and say what the final number is. So actually, the city did agree to an open-ended contract, if you will. That was closed in 2003, and we're now at 29.8 square miles. So that is one of the larger reasons of why the cost went up, that the city didn't have that cap on there at that time.
Yeah, I think that's an important issue. This has been driven by ongoing negotiations with potential litigants, as well as the AQMD that's driven this cost upward. And maybe we were at a mistake years ago for not putting a cap on, saying this is what we're willing to do. But now, we're now committed to this project, and it's continuing to escalate, not always by our doing, but those questions that Ms. Hahn just brought up, I think are deserving of exploration by this council. And just that alone is enough for me to give you my vote today, and I thank Ms. Hahn for bringing that to my attention. Thank you.
Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to speak? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 51 called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. This contract has to do with L.A. World Airports, and it's a much smaller contract. It's not the amount that I'm concerned with. Again, just like the opportunity for the council to go over the details with Lawa and find out what happened here in this particular case, in case anybody has any questions. There were two bidders. One was deemed non-responsive, so it came down to one. Not saying that it's not a good contract, just want to make sure we go over the details.
Mr. Weiss.
Okay, well, I understand the intent of the motion, and I guess, before I vote on, I'd like to hear from airport staff. Mr. DePoyen, if you could come forward with everybody else. There, who's the, hold my time. If I could just ask you folks to address, what is the contract in dispute here? What was the process by which one bidder was arrived at? What should we know about what occurred here?
Yes, my name's Mark Masman. I'm Deputy Executive Director for Project and Facilities Development at Los Angeles World Airports. We have a series of projects going at the airport, some which relate to the Tom Bradley International Terminal modification, some relate to accommodating the new A380 aircraft, some which relate to the new inline security bag system, all of which require some adjustment to our passenger loading bridges. Normally, we would put the passenger loading bridges in the construction contract.
I'm sorry, can you just, for someone like me, you mean the thing I walk across when I go on the airplane?
Right, to get from the terminal building onto the aircraft.
At Bradley.
And we're talking throughout the airport. This particular procurement covers passenger loading bridges at Ontario, at LAX.
The accordion thing.
At Tom Bradley, and there's also our remote gates out at the very far west end of the airport. So there's 26 loading bridges included in this particular procurement. Normally, we would include this in the construction package where the contractor, this would be a subcontract to a contractor, but we have some schedule concerns and issues, plus we felt that pulling all of these from the five packages into one central procurement would create some cost efficiencies for us, and we'd get a better competitive bid. So we basically pulled 26 loading bridges and loading bridge extensions out of the five construction packages, and we've had a common procurement. That procurement, there were two bids. One of the two bidders was deemed non-responsive due to his lack of a good faith effort. That was found by our procurement department, city attorneys, and the Board of Airport Commissioners. Essentially, that's the contract that's going forward here in question.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, wait. The non-responsive one is the one that's going forward, or the one that was?
The non-responsive one was deemed non-responsive, and therefore was not accepted as a bid, and the remaining competitive bid that was responsive is the one moving forward for approval.
Why was it deemed non-responsive? Precisely why?
It was deemed non-responsive to the lack of a good faith outreach effort for DBE compliance. And I have the procurement department here and the attorneys here would both give you more details if you wish.
Okay, I want to ask the attorney to introduce himself and address the issue, please.
Yes, Brian Ossler, Deputy City Attorney. Contract procurement did their regular, as they do with all contracts or bids that come in, did a review of the participation of minority or maybe-webe requirements, and the low bidder in this case had participation of, I believe, 1.3%, where the goal was 5% minority participation, or disadvantaged business participation. The goal was 5%. The low bidder was 1.3% on their bid. Now, that doesn't disqualify them, but because of that, they have to submit good faith effort that they've reached out to these businesses that are certified. After that analysis was done, it was concluded by the staff that they fell well short. Out of 75, out of 100 points, they got 30 points in their good faith documentation. And at that point, they asked our office to review those documents. We reviewed them very carefully. It was woefully inadequate. It was not even a close case in terms of their good faith outreach. And so, seeing that everything, that was an appropriate analysis of the good faith effort, then we recommended that.
And is that good faith effort requirement a legal requirement?
Well, it is a legal requirement.
This is a DBE procurement under federal law, and it is a requirement in federal law.
And based on your determination that they were woefully inadequate in complying with that provision, you determined that it would not be appropriate to, not appropriate, I guess, not just under city law, but also under federal law, under the city's obligation to comply with federal law?
That's right.
Based on that, did you believe the city would be in violation of federal law if it gave the contract to the other bidder?
Well, I don't, maybe Mr. Sussin can address that a little more specifically in terms of how the federal law.
Stuart Sussway with Lawa Procurement. Our group is responsible for the implementation of all admin requirements, and then the review for compliance of those particular requirements. In this case, because there are federal funds involved, we're bound by 49 CFR Part 26, which are the federal regulations for the DBE, or Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. Part of that program states that the prospective bidder proposer will attain the level of DBE participation set for the project, or as Mr. Ossler stated, would then, if not, would submit documentation to show they had made a good faith effort evaluation. So that is contained within the federal guidelines. We are bound by those guidelines on any project where federal funds are involved.
And I'm not familiar with these issues, but have you described in a nutshell the basis for Lawa's decision with respect to that bidder? You've given us what we need to know.
The low bidder in this case, actually, they failed both in the spirit of the DBE program, and they failed also in the particular evaluation.
Can you tell me what the acronym stands for?
Disadvantaged Business Enterprise. The city has a similar program, the MBE/WBE program, which is Minority Business Enterprise. In order to be a DBE, you have to be either an MBE or a WBE, but there are size constraints that the federal government applies.
There's a moment there when I think you sounded like you were in a political cartoon. But, all right, so those are the reasons that the contract was?
Yes, and we're bound to do this 10-step evaluation of the documentation that they had submitted, and they're given points and stated documents that they must provide to attain each of those points in the evaluation. As Mr. Ossler said, they achieved only 30% of the possible 100, thereby failing the 75-point requirement.
Thank you.
Okay, I have next on the queue Ms. Gruel, followed by Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Zine. And colleagues, I want to remind us that we're not voting on the item itself today, only whether or not to assert jurisdiction. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think, colleagues, you know, I'm not a big fan of 245s unless I have, although Ms. Hahn and I talked about the one really strong 245 we had, which was on the burglar alarm, where the commission actually went against what we were saying, and kind of threatened to have it go back and forth for a while. We felt that was an important message to take. I think Mr. Weiss asked a few questions, and I just want to have clarification on this, because, again, I want there to be a reason we 245 an issue. There were two bidders, correct? One was deemed unqualified by the city attorney and your procurement, et cetera.
And our board.
And the difference between the maybe-webe outreach for those two was?
The low bidder, who was disqualified for failing good faith effort, actually submitted participation of 1.3%. The second bidder, who did pass good faith effort, had participation in excess of 16%.
Okay.
But the key issue is the good faith effort here. It's not the level of participation. It's the good faith effort.
Correct.
Process.
Process that they went through.
Which is essentially advertisement, outreach, seeking firms, making available various types of work. Even though they may do that work themselves, the code of federal regulations clearly specifies that they must make available work, and in this case, one firm did not.
Did not, okay. But let's just say they had made a good faith effort. Would you take into consideration the 1% versus the 16% as well as far as participation? I mean, those are two different issues.
We would.
Okay. That's my, again, I, I supported the last 245 because I felt there was some serious questions raised, but in this instance, I, I haven't heard yet. I could be convinced otherwise, but right now, I have not heard anything that would require us to take it away from the commission, whether it be any of the proprietary departments in that, in that area.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think most of my questions have been answered just on the DBE participation and essential to a lot of the work that we've been doing in the Small and Local Business Advisory Committee too. There's no consideration of local businesses, whether the companies have local presence or not, or local employees? Was that part of this?
Under the federal program, we're prohibited from granting geographical preferences.
Okay, so it's, it's just based on the, the DBE stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that answers my question. Thanks.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I'm trying to, trying to figure out what you're all talking about. It's not easy for me. This contract happens, what will happen at the airport? That's what I want to know.
This contract, we will purchase 26 passenger boarding bridges, those bridges that, that span between the building and the airplane, and six of those are actually bridge extensions, and we'll be installing them as part of five different construction contracts that we have going. Those five contracts are the inline bag system at Ontario, inline bag system at LAX, the A380 gate conversion on the Tom Bradley terminals, and, and the remote gate, A380 gate conversion at, out in the west end where we have the remote gates.
So this will help modernize the infrastructure at our two airports that you just said?
Yes, it will.
I know that the 380 wants to come in real quick, and we, we have two potential gates for that, is that true?
We have two gates at the Tom Bradley terminal, and we have four additional gates at the remote facility out to the west.
And, and so, by letting this go forward, you'll be able to, to go forward with these projects?
Yes, they're, they're critical time-wise for these projects, that we have construction contracts already awarded, some of them yet to be awarded, but this is a, is a, as you will, owner-supplied item we're procuring independently, but will feed into the five construction projects.
So we're now understanding the whole thing, so I'm a member of that committee, and obviously, I care about LAX restructuring and modernization and getting things online. And what is this critical timeframe you just mentioned?
Well, essentially, the A380 aircraft is first expected to arrive in Los Angeles in April of 2007, the first aircraft, and another about six months later, run by Qantas. But we have some eight aircraft, eight airlines and two cargo airlines that are planning to fly that aircraft either into LAX or into Ontario. So in order to modify our facilities to be able to accept that aircraft, this is a very high aircraft and has basically two decks to it, so we need two, a different kind of boarding bridge than we have currently. Currently, we have just one boarding bridge that comes off, say, Tom Bradley terminal to the 747 aircraft that you may see. This particular aircraft is so high that we have essentially two vertical, two loading bridges to feed it, and, and, and they're, they're, they're at different levels, ones at the upper level, ones at the, at the normal level. So essentially, we're converting facilities and we're providing those, those boarding bridges. That's one purpose of this procurement. The other purpose is the inline bag system. We're modifying some buildings in order to accommodate that security system, and as we do that, the loading bridges have to be extended because of the building extensions, and we're, we have to modify those bridges as well.
Has this been taken before the Airport Commission?
It has.
The new commission that our great mayor put an incredible mix of commissioners?
Yes, it has.
And so why is it before us now?
I don't know that.
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, it's helpful, what's, what's before us is not the issue of the contracts themselves, but anytime a commission acts on anything, the council has the ability to assert jurisdiction over that decision and either sustain it or overturn it. And the motion that's before us, if you look at our council agenda, it's a motion by Mr. Cardenas, I believe, to assert jurisdiction over this item, and again, whether it's to sustain it or overturn it, that will play itself out if we indeed assert jurisdiction over the item.
Why would we, Mr. President, want to assert jurisdiction at this particular point? That's what I don't understand.
That's a question for Mr. Cardenas. Make her the motion.
Question is, why am I usurping jurisdiction? The fact of the matter is.
Asserting, asserting.
Asserting, thank you. Asserting. It, the fact of the matter is, the, as was discussed already, this is one contract, only two bidders ended up bidding, one was disqualified for whatever reason. Bottom line is, we're down with one bidder. I just want, it's my habit of chairman of the committee to look at these matters just to make double sure everything's fine. I'm not saying that the questions weren't all asked at the board level. I'm not saying they weren't, or there weren't. I'm not judging them. All I'm saying is, we have that authority, I'm exercising, I'm trying to exercise that authority so that we can have this kind of discussion in the policy committee, and then we'll decide what we want to do in the policy committee, and then therefore, this council will decide what they want to do after that, as to whether or not they're going ahead and ratifying what the board had done in its entirety, or there's some reason why we can't do that, then we would actually deny it.
But can I just ask you naively, why don't we just ask them that now and get done with it, and either go forward with it or not?
I have other questions I don't have right now, to, just to be honest with you. I didn't prepare today for a full-fledged policy discussion, that's why we have the policy committee. But it doesn't mean that we can't, or I can't, ask more questions. I'm just telling you where I'm at today. My, my purpose was to prepare for a 245, and then when I go to committee, then we'll prepare for those questions there.
Thank you. Then my last question is, is this so time-sensitive that if it went back to the committee for analysis and vetting, that it would hurt the timetable of, of where we want to go? Because obviously, I want to see this stuff happen.
Well, this is a time-sensitive project. You know, if, if, if the issue is, it depends where that conversation goes. If the conversation is reprocurement in, in some way, that would, that would be very disruptive, because we have a, a construction contract and a very tight schedule going forward to convert the southern gate at the Tom Bradley terminal to the A380. If it's just a matter of supporting the council and answering questions, you know, we're happy to do that now or, or whenever needs to be done. You know, if it's a short timeframe, I, I don't think it's a problem. If it's a long timeframe, it is a problem.
Mr. Chair, do you have any sense of that?
Yes, we can have this done within two weeks and have it back to council. If everything's fine, then it'll just move forward, and then they can go ahead and, and move forward with the contract. But like, but, but the bottom line is, like you said, in a short timeframe, I would imagine that's a short enough timeframe to continue, correct?
Thanks.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. The statement of good faith's been made regarding the past performance. Either company ever been involved in activities with the airport and their record of performance in the past?
I believe the, this, the company that was disqualified has, in the past, supplied this type of equipment to the airport.
Was it satisfactory?
Well, I don't know that. The answer is that in some of our terminals, under long-term lease to airlines, these procurements are handled by the airlines themselves and not by the airport. I think the last instance of the airport purchasing the bridges was, was quite a long time ago, and I, and I don't have information about that.
And these are portable devices, as I understand, these bridges are portable?
No, they're permanent installations. They essentially sit on a, a concrete foundation, a column that's put in place, and there are permanent attachments to the ground. They are able to move, they are sectional, and they are, they have, are powered and, and can fit different types of aircraft, but they are not easily moved from gate to gate, if that's your question.
And how many companies manufacture this?
Well, internationally, there's, there's manufacturers in other countries, but in the United States, the two bidders that we receive provide, I think, well up in the 90% of all the bridges in the United States.
Okay, and these are for the 380? They're not going to be used until the 380 arrives?
No, as I said, there are multiple purposes of this particular procurement. One is the A380 gates, the two at Bradley, and the, the remote gates. But with the inline baggage security system that we're, we're installing, we are widening buildings at certain points, and in order for the aircraft to then have to sit a few feet farther out, and therefore, the, those bridges have to be lengthened in order to reach those aircrafts. So we have, a number of these bridges are, are for those types of situations as well.
And the number of bridges that are currently in use at Lawwa, are they going to all be replaced at Lawwa and, and Ontario?
No.
Or just a few of them?
Just a few of them. We have those, these types of bridges at most gates. Some of them are, are, are not that old. We are replacing some of the very old bridges. Actually, we have another procurement package coming forward to replace those in Terminal 3, but these were the bridges in this package that we needed to support these two large construction programs that we have.
And as far as the chairperson of that committee, Mr. Cardenas, if this were to go back to the committee and it would be approximately a two-week timeframe before it came back here, that wouldn't cause any great inconvenience for your operation?
No, I can't say that it would.
Okay, so I would, Mr. President, are there any more speakers?
Yes, there are.
Okay, then, I was going to make a motion, but we'll continue.
I have Mr. Labange next on the queue, and then both Mr. Weiss and Mr. Cardenas each for a second time. Mr. Weiss?
I was asked, interestingly, by the representative for the losing bidder here, if he could have the chance to address the council, and he told me that public hearing was closed. So I would, Tom, I'll listen to you. No, Mr. Yvett. I was, I was asked as a courtesy, if, if you wanted to address the council, I would move to reopen the public hearing if, if, if you wanted to have the chance to, to say something in the council about them.
It's the will of the body here. Again, colleagues, we're not having.
But he's, he's willing to put his hands up. If you don't want to speak, you don't have to speak. That's fine. You don't want to speak, you don't, don't speak.
We're not having a debate on the contract itself, just on the question of whether or not to assert jurisdiction.
I was asked by a gentleman, I was doing him a courtesy, he doesn't seem to want to speak. I, I am still, I mean, I guess I'd say to, to Mr. Cardenas, I, I have joined in my share of 245s since I've been here, but there's always, I, I think, you know, some articulable basis that one ought to have to go down the road of a 245. And a basis isn't that two weeks won't kill you. The basis is, there's a reason for the council to act under its constitutional authority, under the charter, and all I have heard from, about this contract is that Lawwa staff and then the city attorney's office determined that one bidder complied with federal law and the other did not, and that with respect to this disadvantaged business program, that it wasn't even close between the two bidders, 16% and 1% or something like that, and that on the area of good faith, that the losing bidder was, quote, "woefully inadequate." That doesn't seem to me to be a sufficient basis to assert jurisdiction.
Have Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Labange.
No.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas passes, Mr. Labange.
I call for the questions and ask all members in their seats.
You're the last speaker on the queue, so that ends discussion. We have the item before us. Let's open the roll. Of whether or not to assert jurisdiction on the item before us.
Mr. Rosendahl, all members in the seat, Sergeant.
The item before us moves to assert jurisdiction. The roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Five ayes, six noes.
Okay, that motion fails. Next item, Madam Curran.
And, Mr. President, the time limit is tomorrow, so that can be on council's agenda again tomorrow unless somebody wishes to receive and file it.
Okay. Seeing, hearing no such motion, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk, Council President Petya requests to be excused Tuesday, November 1st, to leave at noon for city business. A motion is required.
Okay, Ms. Perry moves, that excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, colleagues, before we proceed to announcements today, we do have a group of individuals who came in for general public comment after we closed our public comment period earlier this meeting. But I understand they have two representatives to speak on behalf of the group. I'll read off the names and will add all the speaker cards to the file for today's meeting, but our first speaker is, I believe, Sheila Bernard, and the group is made up of Aaron Grayson, Ingrid Muller, Britten Korex, Gloria Morales, Adi Weiderman, Dimitris Denis-Wilson, and Wei Fan Chu.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I'm here on behalf of Lincoln Place tenants who are with me today. They're going to stand, so you know who they are. We are not here only on behalf of Lincoln Place tenants, because what we've come to you with affects the entire city of Los Angeles and will affect each one of your council districts. We're here because you wrote, and you approved a project for Lincoln Place with conditions. Those conditions included protection for the tenants of Lincoln Place, so that with the owner going out of business on the units we're living in, there were mitigations for the impacts of the owner going out of that business. These impacts are covered by CEQA, they're covered in the Ellis Act, and your approval was ruled by the appellate court to be legal. So you have legally approved a, a, a project, it has conditions of approval, and now the owner of Lincoln Place is flagrantly violating those conditions of approval, and there appears to be, short of the city attorney stepping in at your request, there appears to be no way to stop a developer from violating the conditions of approval that you write. This has, this has repercussions all over the city. And I ask you, I urge you, to send someone from your staff to the Plum Committee, which meets immediately following this council hearing. We are making a presentation there about this situation, which includes visuals that I believe that you will find compelling. So I hope very much that you will send someone from your staff or come yourself to the Plum Committee immediately following this council hearing.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Britten Korey, and I have been trying to contact each of your offices to make sure that you received all the facts and information about what's going on. Conditions of approval, a plan that you approved, are being violated. The city attorney and the housing department are telling us there's nothing that they can do except deny demolition permit when it gets submitted. By that time, all of these people will be homeless. Their homes will be gone. We, as, a lot of you know Lincoln Place, we have a significant amount of elderly and disabled people, and quite a few families who speak English as a second language, and I personally will be losing my home in two days. I'm waiting for the sheriff to come. I urge you to please go to the Plum Committee, please listen to our presentation, please become informed on this issue, because it concerns all of the districts. Your power is being usurped by the city attorney's office refusing to take actions to enforce conditions of approval that you all have, have approved. It, it means that they mean nothing. Please come and listen to us today at the Plum Committee.
Thank you. And the item is on the agenda upstairs. Just thank you for being here. Your cards have been added as part of the file. We'll once again close public comments. Mr. Rosendahl for some remarks.
Yes, Mr. President. First, I want to thank you for allowing the tenants from Lincoln Place to speak in public comment. I want my colleagues to know, this is a very serious issue. I met with the tenants on Sunday. In fact, I woke up yesterday morning with one of them in my mind that I was holding in my arms that was crying, that is going to be forced out on Thursday. If the sheriffs come, 24 residence units, the people will be evicted. Another 50 will be evicted within a month. And I want to say just two things. AMCO, stop the eviction process from going forward on Thursday. And preservationists, come to a reasonable understanding with the developer on the number of units that can be preserved. I want to see all 170 residents in that complex continue to live there, and I know the mayor is engaged in this issue as well. So AMCO, do not evict these people. And preservationists, come to terms with AMCO where we all can win on this. This is a very serious matter. We're going into the holiday season, and I can't tell you how upset I am to see people over bulldozers seems to be the way we're doing it. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Colleagues, this brings us to the announcements section of today's meeting. Do we have any announcements today? Ms. Labange?
I just want to, it's a very positive announcement, although there was a tragedy in my district on Friday night of a fire on Santa Monica Boulevard at Citrus, where a captain of Station 61, Eric Green, was on the aerial ladder and unfortunately came in contact with high power. He was resuscitated by his fellow firefighters and then transported to Kaiser Hollywood. Then now he's in Sherman Oaks Burns Center in Sherman Oaks, but he is critical but stable and improving, and improving, which is so important. And on Sunday evening, I was at the Firehouse 61's on Third Street and visited with his wife and family, so it's a good story of recovery of, and hold a good thought for Fire Captain Eric Green, Station 61 Task Force Commander, who serves this city every day for 28 years, is a great firefighter, and is in recovery. Thank you.
And our prayers go out to him and his family. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to, one, thank the, all the stakeholders who got involved this past weekend at the Alley River Revitalization Plan Committee meeting. We had over 200 folks there, many young people, which was very, very refreshing. Many of the folks involved with environment, people involved with development. It was a great, great. with environment, people involved with development. It was a great, great cross-section of different interest groups who are concerned about the future of this city, its water systems, its housing, its open space. Tremendous. And it's the second meeting. The first one was held in the valley, in North Hollywood, and we had a great presence there. So colleagues, one of the reasons why it works, because each of the council offices was engaged in the public outreach. When we have the committee meeting in your respective areas, we sure hope you can support us with your staff efforts and making sure all your stakeholders are aware of the opportunities that are arising from this process. So thank you very much. Congratulations to all the stakeholders.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I just want to announce on Lifetime Channel tonight at 9 o'clock is the second part of the two-part series on human trafficking. If you watched the series last night, the first part, they showed and they demonstrated that it's a domestic issue where especially young girls, not exclusively, but mostly young girls are being kidnapped and then trafficked and putting through horrendous, horrendous actions. And in addition to that, it's an international issue happening right here on our soil. So if you could see it tonight, 9 o'clock on Lifetime Channel, human trafficking, and basically what human trafficking is, modern-day slavery. And so it's an opportunity for us all to learn about it.
Other announcements? Then the final announcement will be, colleagues, a motion was approved today to cancel this upcoming Friday's council meeting. It's a big day for the San Fernando Valley and really all of the region with the dedication of the Orange Line, the East-West Busway in the San Fernando Valley. I believe the program begins at 10 o'clock, so to allow members of the council to participate who represent the valley, serve on MTA, and all members are invited. This Friday, council will be in recess due to the Orange Line dedication. Would you all please rise for adjourned motions? Our first adjourned tribute, colleagues, is to, in honor of one of the icons of the civil rights movement, wanted to recognize Councilmember Perry first.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you for that special honor to adjourn in memory of Rosa Parks. She was known as the Alabama seamstress, whose simple act of defiance on a segregated Montgomery bus in 1955 led to nonviolent civil rights protests and aided Martin Luther King in fueling the civil rights movement. She passed away at the age of 92 in her home in Detroit, Michigan. When she refused to relinquish her seat to a white man on a bus, she was arrested and fined $14. This simple act led to a boycott of city buses in Montgomery that lasted for 381 days, a boycott by African-Americans that nearly bankrupted the transportation system. The boycott ended when the United States Supreme Court declared the law unconstitutional. Mrs. Parks was born on February 4th, 1913, in Tuskegee, Alabama, to Leona Edwards, a teacher, and James McCauley, a carpenter and builder. In later years, she married Raymond Parks, a Montgomery barber. Mr. Parks was also an activist in the local NAACP and helped raise money to defend the nine black men accused in the Scottsboro rape case, one of the most sensational trials of the Depression era. After her marriage, Mrs. Parks held a succession of jobs from domestic worker to hospital aide. To get to work, she rode the bus as the majority of blacks did at the time. The bus passengers, black bus passengers, had to follow different rules. The first 10 seats were reserved for whites, even if no whites got on the bus. Blacks had to sit in the back rows, or if those were filled, stand. If the white section filled up, some drivers ordered blacks to give up their seats. One day, in 1943, Parks boarded a bus to register to vote, but the back of the bus was standing room only. Instead of stepping off to go to the back door after paying her fare in front, she walked down the aisle. The driver, James Blake, demanded that she disembark and reboard at the rear of the bus. She got off and waited for the next bus. She swore to herself never to ride with that driver again. But on a winter evening 12 years later, after a long day at work, she got on the bus without noticing that Blake was the driver that night. She was by then an active member of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People and a recent graduate of Highlander Folk School in Tennessee, a training ground for civil rights workers where whites served her meals and studied side by side with her as her equal. She saw an empty seat in the middle of the bus, no man's land, and took it. At the next stop, the white section filled up, and no, and one white passenger was left standing. Blake told Parks and three other blacks in the front rows of the black section to give up their seats. She refused to budge, and she was arrested. In 1987, Mrs. Parks founded the Rosa and Raymond Parks Institute to help black children excel and improve their sense of self-worth. In her 80s, she amassed honors, including a lifetime achievement award from the American Public Transit Association, the International Freedom Conductor Award from the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center, and in 1996, President Clinton bestowed the Medal of Freedom, and in 1999, Congress awarded her the Congressional Gold Medal in recognition of her contribution to humanity. She was also blessed by Pope John Paul. A candlelight vigil in her honor will be held at 6:30 PM this evening in La Merck Park.
That'll certainly be all members. Other remarks about Rosa Parks? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I just wanted to honor her presence, her contributions for all people of color. This country has gone through so many changes over the decades, and her presence, her gesture, her act sent a signal that we still feel today. And I just think it's important that people of all color acknowledge the contribution and the tremendous, tremendous effort that caused such great opportunities for many of us who are here today.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just might say, I had the pleasure of meeting her. And as she became older, she became my mother, too. And I was pushing her once in her wheelchair, and her determination, her free spirit, and most importantly, her sense of humor was so evident. And she was an inspiration to me, and I know to all people.
Ms. Hunt.
Thank you. I, too, just wanted to just take this opportunity to honor Rosa Parks. I mean, she, as Ed said, she really transcended all colors, you know, all races, all, both genders. She really was a woman that I think, listening to this story again, really strikes, I think, for all of us, that, that point where we've all come to a situation where we knew something was wrong, we knew the right thing to do, and whether or not we had the courage to do it, I think, is what strikes me about this story. She's an inspiration to all of us when we find the situation, when we know the right thing to do, to do it. And she certainly will be an inspiration to people for generations to come. I also, one of the highlights of my life really was getting to meet her and sit next to her as she was a guest at one of my dad's many celebrations during Black History Month at the Martin Luther King Jr. Hospital. And this might sound corny, but I'll tell you, holding her hand and singing "We Shall Overcome" with the audience was really a moment that I felt really inspired and empowered to do the right thing every time I had an opportunity to. So, she's a great woman. I think it was Herb Weston who was able to successfully push through the naming of the Rosa Parks Exchange or Overpass off the 10 freeway. I was also there at that dedication. So every time people drive by that, they, hopefully they will remember what a great woman she was. She had great courage, great bravery, and really spawned an incredible movement which has liberated a lot of people.
Ms. Kruhl.
Thank you. Mr. President, I wanted to just add my condolences as well. I had the pleasure of meeting her through our friend Jan Perry, through Willis Edwards, who helped her in the foundation. I saw him on TV last night talking about the many accomplishments that she had. And I think Rosa Parks' life demonstrated to us that a simple act, a very simple act that says something, this is wrong, can change, can change the world. And that's what I think we're all recognizing today, her, her years of service to this country. But she took that one step that all of us continue to hopefully take in our lives and our careers to make a difference. But she was one that changed this world. She'll be, she'll be missed.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, thank you very much. Everyone had so many wonderful things to say. And Ed, when you said that, not just this country, but the world, as they, in the obituaries which I read, they spoke of that in Tiananmen Square, when the young man stood in front of the tank, they referenced that he pulled a Rosa Parks, and that acronym, as it described. But what is nice in life is you have these stories of history of people, of 12 years later after she, and suffering through this terrible act that was part of our lives in this country at that time, she stood up again to sit down for all people, to stand or sit to do whatever she could do. And just from a personal note, too, I remember when I was 15, working at a print shop on Vermont Avenue, at 1803 South Vermont, Tivoli Printing, and Lester Ballard, who came from Texas to live in Southern California, an African-American, told me all about Rosa Parks and how it meant so much to him. And when, I can recall at an age that I am now, of having that influence by someone who lived it, lived through that time period, it makes me a much better person. And all of your stories, especially Janice's, your story of meeting, as Wendy said, as Jan said, all of us, this is truly one of the great heroes of America the last century. And to live to be 92, I know she also was, unfortunately, in one of the obituaries, mugged several years ago, but was able to survive that unfortunate thing that should never happen to anybody, for what a saint. And if I was a pope, which I'm not, there would be a Saint Rosa Parks.
And let me just add, by reciting some of her own words, in an event honoring her in 1988, she was quoted as saying, "I am leaving this legacy to all of you to bring peace, justice, equality, love, and the fulfillment of what our lives should be. Without vision, the people will perish, and without courage and inspiration, dreams will die. The dream of freedom and peace." And colleagues, on, as we do mourn the passing of Rosa Parks, we also received news early this morning of the passing late last night. As I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, a former council member and former Congress member, Ed Royball, who was elected to the city council in 1949 and elected to Congress in 1962, becoming the first Latino from California to serve in Congress in modern times, where he served for 30 years. Mr. Reyes?
Hey, Council President. Ed Royball began his public career in 1940 as a health educator for the California Tuberculosis Association, where he became the Director of Health Education for the Los Angeles County Tuberculosis and Health Association. As Councilmember Padilla has mentioned, he became a councilman in 1949, and in 1962, was elected to the House of Representatives, became a very strong advocate in civil rights, and was able to serve on the prestigious Appropriations Committee and as the chairman of the Subcommittee on Treasury, Postal Service, and General Government. His vision and ability to analyze problem situations prompted him to fight and obtained in 1982, the first ever funding specifically dedicated to research on AIDS. He was also a pioneer and the first to provide funding for Alzheimer's disease. Mr. Royball was a major catalyst in establishment of the House Select Committee on Aging and served as its chairman from 1983 to 1993. Congressman Royball is widely recognized as a national leader in securing adequate healthcare and housing for older persons. Was one of the first legislators to introduce legislation to establish a national health plan for the United States. Congressman Royball was the founder and president of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus and the National Association of Latino Elected and Appointed Officials, Naleo. Mr. Royball served as a consultant to the Institute for Applied Gerontology, which bears his name at Cal State LA. He was also the president to the Edward R. Royball Foundation, which is dedicated to providing scholarships to deserving students to attend college. College was even striking, just as striking to me, that hits home personally. In the Latino community, we have traditions called padrinos and compadres. My compadre, who baptized my son, his father is Dr. Rodolfo Flores, who was Congressman Royball, then councilmember's Finance Committee Chair in 1949. And I had the privilege of hearing some of the stories that, as a Mexican-American, he went through in terms of the struggles and tribulations that echo from the struggles that our other icons in civil rights have gone through. I recall one time when they mentioned how, for one reason or another, the Alley PD was being very strict and almost aggressive to him and were literally following him from one place to another as a way to impose a certain type of will, if you, because of the prejudice and racism that occurred at that time. And for him to have the courage to come into this building to represent a community that did not have a voice, and given all of the animosity and ignorance that comes from racism, to be that strong and stand and endanger himself and his family for doing the right thing, is something that we all should cherish, because those of us who now sit in these chairs are here because of those sacrifices. And it's important to recognize our obligations in light of what they have experienced, what they gave up. And his legacy continues in the great work that's been achieved and is being achieved by Congressmember Lucille Royball Allard. So with great sympathy, condolences, I'd like to also adjourn in his memory.
All members and colleagues, let me just add, and I know others want to say a few words, that Congressman Royball arrived in Boyle Heights at the age of six years old. His father had moved the family from Albuquerque after losing his job following a railroad strike. Ed Royball attended Roosevelt High School, joined the New Deal Civilian Conservation Corps, and went on to study at UCLA and Southwestern University, where he studied law. As Councilmember Reyes mentioned, he worked with the California Tuberculosis Association, and he also served in the US Army during World War II. He ran for city council first in 1947 and was defeated. In 1949, he came back and ran again, this time as president of the community service organization, working closely with Fred Ross. He was the same Fred Ross who trained Cesar Chavez in his early years. Ed Royball went about the work of organizing the East Side. In 1949, the CSO organized registration drives and get-out-the-vote efforts, and the campaign was essentially run out of his home, and the names of voters were kept on three-by-five cards in shoeboxes. The efforts paid off when Ed Royball won his seat on the city council. He served on the city council from 1949 to 1962, when he was elected to Congress, becoming the first Latino from California to serve in Congress in modern times. And after 30 years of serving on the Congress, he was succeeded by his daughter, Lucille Royball Allard. And what a tribute and a legacy to leave behind, but a strong representative from Los Angeles, serving on the Appropriations Committee. He was an advocate for many of the most needy constituencies, as Councilmember Reyes had mentioned. He was also one of the founding members of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus, and he helped pave the way, really, for the diversity of this council. And it's appropriate that we all adjourn his memory for his service to this city and his service to the country. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for those words as well. I think at a time when we have a Latino mayor and city attorney and many members of the city council, we take for granted what somebody like Ed Royball did. And for a long, long time, he was not only a representative, he was the representative, and was the person who had the weight of an entire community in many ways on his shoulder. My grandparents told me what that first campaign, my grandfather, after he came back from the war, was like. And of particular interest to me, when Boyle Heights kind of coalition between Jews and Latinos in that election, at a time when many Jews still lived in Boyle Heights and on the East Side, how important that was. Ed Royball had a profound impact on my own life, my own family's life. My father first was considering running for District Attorney. The first person he sat down with was Ed Royball, and there hadn't been a Latino DA here in, over a century and a half. And Ed Royball was the person who was his first endorsement and told him to do it and to go for it. And I know it's something that my father never forgot. And Ed Royball was a hero a generation before in my family, but certainly continued to be. And knowing his, his daughter and his grandchildren, and what a legacy of service they continue to imbue. There's a great, if you go to the Los Angeles Public Library Archive site, you can click on some historical photos, and there's some amazing photos of that first campaign where you have part of downtown and, and the East Side just plastered with a royal campaign where you have part of downtown and the East Side just plastered with a Royball campaign movement. And I know there was a lot of campaigning that would, to call it ugly would be a great understatement, but not only did he persevere and provide an opening here for so many and a voice for so many, he then took that to Washington, D.C., and we have truly lost one of our greats to say goodbye to him and Rosa Parks in the same meeting is almost too much tragedy.
Ms. Kruhl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some wonderful words have been said about Congressman Royball, and I remember, the first time I met him, I was working for Tom Bradley, and we were going to have the first childcare center here in City Hall East. And it was because of his leadership on the issue, because of his leadership in finding funding for the program that we were opening, this childcare center. Had the pleasure of knowing his daughter and grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and the joy at the wedding of his grandson, how happy he was and how proud he was of his family. And I think Mr. Garcetti mentioned the legacy of service, that not only all of the things that he did, there's buildings named after him, there's facilities, there's programs named after him, but sometimes your greatest gift is to instill in public service, whether it be through your family or others. And he certainly did that. And as Mr. Reyes said, he was someone who broke down barriers. And I think Ed Avila came down today, and so many of us know Ed was such a close friend of the congressman, spent many, many days recently with him at the hospital and with his family today. But he always talked about him as that one Latino politician that was there from the beginning and led the way. And as you said, Mr. Reyes, led the way for so many people to be able to be elected and to participate in the public process. And so he is somewhat of an icon to many of us and strive to be as good of an elected official as he was and be able to have the greatest impact as he did here in Los Angeles, but across the country. Thank you.
Ms. Hunt.
Yeah, it's just, what a, what a great man. He was a champion for the elderly, he was a champion for minorities, and he was a champion for those who were physically challenged. It would be great if we continued, you know, what he fought for, and we were also champions of those people in our society. He and my dad served on this City Council together. Ed was councilman for the 9th District, and my dad was the councilman for the 8th District. They really sort of started out together and were dear, dear friends until my dad's passing. And he was also one of those that you went to for advice. And I know that he advised my dad on a lot of issues, and they were dear friends. He was one of my first endorsements, Ed Royball was, when I ran for City Council. And his endorsement with seniors was just unparalleled, because they knew that they could trust him and that he fought for their interests. So, as Eric said, to say goodbye to Rosa Parks and Ed Royball on the same day is really amazing. Two great American heroes.
Ms. Labons.
I just, what everybody has said, too, but to add to it, it's an ascension. It's an ascension from this place for 90 years, Ed Royball, and what he's done, and as Ed spoke of his history, I'm sure that motivated you and as part of your blood and other blood of people who see what struggles men and women have, to get what they feel is right for others. And Ed Royball was just that. He was a great friend of Los Angeles, which is so important to have in Congress, and I'm so pleased the courthouse was finally built right across from us here to have the name of the Royball Building, as well as the Health Center, the much-needed Health Center, and other facilities. But he truly is a giant in our history, political landscape, and his family, but to live to be 90 is a plus-plus, and to contribute and to come from Roosevelt High School, and all that is real important, as I see that man, and I'm glad to stand and sing his praises and extend my sympathies to his family and his wonderful daughter, who's a great member of Congress, who is always looking out for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Janice mentioned that he had been councilmember for the 9th Council District, and I feel very honored to follow in a line such as that. I had the privilege of just having dinner with him several years ago, and while he was in failing health at the time, he was quite sharp and his mind was very acute. And I asked him a question about what he thought the difference was between those who served now and how it was back then, when he was a councilmember. And he said, you know, he looked at, he said he looked at Kenny Hahn, and he said, "Well, he could serve all the ethnic groups," and he thought to my, he said, "I thought to myself, well, why couldn't I?" And he said he packed up his two little daughters and his wife, and they walked all over the district and knocked on people's doors and asked them for their vote. And it's something that stuck with me, the simplicity of the act, just like Rosa Parks, Parks, the directness of it, the respect shown for each person whose vote you asked for to come to their home and explain to them why you felt that you wanted to be in public service. And I think it's a lesson that we could all learn. And whenever I talk to some of the younger people in the district about the 9th District leading the way in diversity of representation, I always cite Congressman and Councilman Royball as the example, and that he was the one who supported the appointment of Gil Lindsay to this council seat, before Mr. Lindsay even ran for it. He passed the mantle to him. It was a different time.
Ms. Rosendahl.
As I said about Rosa Parks being a mother, he was a father, and he was a father to us around the City Council, and his spirit is here. And as Gil Lindsay used to say, "The fighting ninth." He was a fighter for people and for equality. What he did on AIDS at a time when it wasn't fashionable to stand up for people with AIDS, he was there. And as the good Lord says, "By your fruits you'll be known," to have a daughter that we all know around the horseshoe here as a great leader in Congress is a terrific legacy. So may he also rest in peace.
Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that our recollections of this great man and our ability to be policymakers and go through the scrutiny and all the kinds of things we go through as elected officials, and appreciate what he did as a person who broke barriers, a person who represented everybody, a person who knew that as a Latino and as an American, he could represent everybody, and he did. I think it's important for those out there listening who aren't involved in politics to understand that he was the kind of true servant that democracy is based on, because every politician that I've ever heard, including myself, say that we are going to represent those who don't have a voice, we're going to represent those who need a voice, we're going to represent those that perhaps are discounted and not listened to. And just looking at all of the works that he did, he never, ever forgot that. And he, he lived it, and that's something that I think is worthy of mentioning, because not only was he great, not only did he serve 30 years in Congress, not only was he a councilman who broke barriers there as well, not only did he earn the respect of people involved in politics, but more importantly, he actually embodied what makes this country great, and that is service, true, honest-to-Godness service, not doing things because it's politically correct, or not doing things because it's politically savvy or noticed, but just doing it because it's the right thing to do. So I just wanted to bring that out, because it was said earlier, but I think that I don't want people to get lost in the idea that it's only the political people who appreciate what a grand person he is and was, but actually the people who never met him, people he never personally talked to, he touched their lives, and he saved lives, and he worked on issues that perhaps, had he not been there, they would have not been advanced.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to say a few words. I wasn't expecting this honor. In 1987, I ran for the Assembly and Congressman Royball was my first endorsement. And I remember him telling me that I was running in quote-unquote "against the machine." And his position was, "We've got to let the people make, have choices." And because of that, he chose to support me and give me the courage to basically take on everybody who was part of the other side. And that was the beginning of my political career. I also want to remind people that when he started in Naleo, people forget that Harry Pajon worked for Congressman Royball, and Ed Avila worked for Congressman Royball, Fernando Torres Gil worked for Congressman Royball. He was a man of tremendous integrity. He swore me in when I got elected in 1991, and he also supported me when I had my own personal crisis. He always talked first about his family, and then he talked about the people he represented. And a story that just keeps on coming to my mind, just to kind of remind us all why that courage was so important. He always talked about putting sidewalks in East LA and streets, because they weren't paved when he ran for office. But when he ran for office, he used to make money by ironing people's clothes out of his home, and that, those were the days. But I remember him talking to me about the swimming pool next to Roosevelt High School, and him basically going for the dedication of that swimming pool. And there was a sign that he had to have taken down, because the sign basically said something to the effect of, "Whites could use the pool Monday through Thursdays, Mexicans Friday through Saturday, because they clean the water on Sunday." If we understand the courage that it took to basically break those kinds of barriers and to be a policymaker who stood up to those kinds of issues, then I think we understand the great man that Congressman Royball was. And thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to say these few words.
Thank you. May he rest in peace. Adam Crook, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.